Good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting for the city council of Perry. I'm calling the meeting to order.
Sterling.
Here.
Laurel.
Here.
Eversole.
Here.
Marshall.
President.
Franklin.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Aldair.
Johnson.
Here.
Gloria, could I propose one of you give us an invitation, please?
Glad to thank you. It's great. Father, we just thank you for a beautiful day. We thank you for these that are standing around the table, that are making decisions for our city. We thank you, Lord, for the time that they give to us. And we just ask now that as we consider the budget, that you would give them wisdom, that we will go forward and continue to be a progressive city. We just thank you because we know that all things that are done through you are done properly and right. We just ask your blessings upon them tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. We are here to discuss the budget. It is not a night where we'll approve the budget. We are going to discuss it. That's why I think we're all invited. I'm going to turn this over to our CFO, Russ Meacham, to explain.
And lucky for you guys, as you expect, you now have another draft in front of you tonight. So let me jump into that here in just a second. But if you will, let me start off with a little bit of a discussion related to reserves and related to, you know, why do we, as a city, set aside some monies long-term so that we build cash reserves in order to meet the needs? If you look at our budget and if you look at what we're doing, we will spend between our city government and between our utility piece, almost $18 million next year. You know, that $18 million, whenever we just have rollovers of bills and we just, by the time we bill it out and by the time we collect it, by the time we go on sales tax remittance and those kind of things, you know, there is a certain level of reserve, you know, that we need to have. If you look at what our budget is setting at right now, in those two funds, we have right at about $4 million. So we don't quite have 25 percent of our total expenditures for next year set aside in fund balance. You know, our goal, starting out earlier on, was to get us to 25 percent. That, to me, is at least the start of where, you know, some of our other municipalities have rainy day funds established. And those rainy day funds start at a 25 percent cash reserve set aside. What do we need cash reserves for? Not only this, just making sure that we can pay bills, that we can continue to operate in a functional manner. We also need it for those other one-offs that come along, those one-time occurrences that we don't ever want to talk about happening, but they do happen to our communities. Whether it be ice storms, whether it be tornadoes, you know, those are the two big things that we think about day in and day out. And guess what? Those are above ground. But guys, we have a little more of an anomaly up here than what a lot of communities deal with. And every once in a while, our ground shakes under our feet. And every once in a while, those shakings will cause some disruptions in some of our services, you know?
I don't want to interrupt, but real quick while it's on my mind.
Yes, sir.
On these communities that do have rainy day funds. Are those normally communities that have oil and gas or things like that? How did they build their rainy day fund?
A lot of those communities, and one in particular, has a restricted sales tax that was established. It was 25 percent of one penny. So the 25 cents of every dollar that they collected in sales tax had to be accumulated until the point at which they had 25 percent of their operating expenditures set aside in this rainy day fund. Then any excess growth in that, they could use for daily operations. If they did not meet it in that year, then they couldn't use any of those excess funds. And that number changed every year based on the increase in expenditures in that overall budget. The voters approved it. It was part of an initial sales tax petition whenever it went out, that those funds would then be set aside for that rainy day piece. You know, and so most of the time, we see that established that way with the sales tax requirement usually is on those third and fourth pennies that these municipalities are operating on. You bring up kind of a point, and let me just change topics for just a second here.
And I apologize.
No, no. And luckily, I don't have a script here that I'm going to read from, which might be detrimental to you all. Please don't call me Bryce at the end of the day. That was all the love I had. But whatever we look at that, you know, one thing to consider about Perry, and one thing that you guys have to keep in mind, we operate our general government on one penny and one penny only. We fund our police, our fire, we fund our libraries, our street daily repairs, our swimming pool, our parks, our center. All of that is funded on one penny. The majority, and matter of fact, I do not have another city that does not have at least two cents of unrestricted sales tax coming into the general fund every year. You know, guys, that by itself is one of the pieces that we have to deal with year in and year out. You give us another $600,000 of unrestricted sales tax to go into our general fund to operate on, the dollars that we have to transfer from our utility authority in order to keep our level of services the same goes down by $600,000. That's almost a 20 percent decrease in what we would need to transfer over from the utility authority to our general operations if we just have that extra penny. Our other pennies are committed to great projects. This happens all across the state with lots of things that go on. You know, we're committed a penny to streets. We will continue to pay that penny until it expires in '18, as I think. We're trying to speak on that right now. But we'll pay that penny until '18, but that's going straight to streets. We're paying another penny and a quarter, you know, 1.25 percent is going to service our water. The life-wake merger, whenever we did that debt, we're committing that over to the water side. That's almost $600,000. Well, the debt service one, it's about $600,000 a year that we're paying over in the PMA side that we're using our sales tax dollars to operate on. Water by itself effectively is not carrying itself in its utility rate. And this is something that Brad and I were talking a little earlier. This is something that goes all the way back to whenever he was first on council and I first came in. You know, one of the first analysis we looked at was that some of those utilities are not covering their cost. Our water and our sewer effectively, whenever you put all of their cost in them, aren't covering themselves. We're subsidizing it with some sales tax money to make that happen. So those sales tax dollars, whenever we don't have that, make us very dependent upon our utility system for operations. And that's one of the things that you guys need to know and you need to look at. Because our utility system is what keeps us being able to put the policemen on the streets, in the fire department and in the ambulances, that keeps the library open, keeps our swimming pool operational. If we didn't have that subsidy coming in from our PMA to support those activities, we couldn't carry on at that level. And that, whenever we start trying to cut and whenever we start trying to do things, you know, we have to look at the utilities. Because we're unlike any other state in the nation. Matter of fact, this is, it's really funny whenever you get on earnings calls, they're trying to rate bonds, and you start talking to the people in New York and in Los Angeles that are rating your bonds, and they say, "Well, what's your ad valorem adjustment going to be this year?" And we say, "We don't have any ad valorem tax." And they're like, "What?" And we're like, "We are the only state, but we are supported by no property tax." So every penny that the citizens pay in property tax, we don't see any of that. That is not for our general operations. All we are funded by and all we can run on is sales tax. And all the citizens, from past history, but all the citizens inside of Perry have given us to run on is one penny of sales tax. You can run down the road to Stillwater or up I-35 to Taco Wall or wherever you want to go, they're running on minimum of two pennies and some of them on three pennies of operations. So whenever you want to start, whatever your constituents start wanting to say to you, "Well, you guys are overcharging in your utilities. I'm going to move here," we have to charge in our utilities based on what we've been given in our other general operations. And that's, it's a matter of balancing those numbers out, but at the end, we come to a number, and those are the numbers that you see in front of you. Now let me jump back to that reserve piece. You know, those reserves, guys, can go away in the blink of an eye. Those reserves do not last long with any natural disaster that comes our way. Whether it be from the clouds or whether it be from the ground, those dollars will not last in the rebuilding of any parts of our system. I use as a regular example, and I hate whatever I have to give specific examples, and I have them, but the city of Cordell, back in 2001, 2002, they were hit with back-to-back natural disasters of a tornado in October and an ice storm at the end of January. So effectively, what? The tornado didn't wipe out, the ice storm tore down whenever it came through. And the rebuild on that system was almost $4 million. They didn't have $4 million reserves in the bank. They were going and they were borrowing money and they were making, you know, they were making all of those things happen by credits and issuing revenue debt real quickly inside the city. They were trying to rebuild what they had. Cordell is about 60 percent the size of Perry. Now, we get a direct hit from a tornado situation, from something like that, and that was, guys, that was in 2001. That was 14 years ago. Our CPI increase, and we will talk about this here in just a second, even further, but our CPI increase is 34 percent over the last 12 years. So give me, I'll just use the 34 percent. But that $4 million then, five and a half, $6 million in today's dollars, not even a community our size. And not, we're not talking, it was an F2 tornado. We're not talking something that was, you know, a more sized tornado running through our town. So whenever I say we need reserves and whenever we talk about building their reserves to adequate levels, those levels, I don't want $10 or $15 million in the bank to tell you that that's our reserve. That's not what we're asking for. But what we're asking for is something that whenever we do end up in a disaster piece, whenever we do end up with some hard times, whenever we end up that sales tax overnight goes from $600,000 to $300,000, which I don't ever anticipate to happen, but if it does, that we have enough money that we can continue to operate this city until we have time to make the adjustments necessary to do those things. Hey, the first time we start seeing those significant drops, the expense side's going to be, you know, Mary's going to be watching it as close as anybody in making those changes. But still, in time, it takes some time to get those changes made and get them implemented. You know, we cannot do a lot of those things overnight. So our reserves are something significant that we have to make sure that we're maintaining and that we keep up. Whenever I first came in, in the first budget year that I was here, we had a deficit, we adopted a budget with a deficit, it was adopted where I came, but they had adopted a deficit fund change for that fiscal year of almost $680,000. Yeah, $680,000 was what they were going to lose in cash in one year. Now, that was back whenever we started talking about making the change to utility rates and started looking at some of those things. Because you cannot continue. In our general fund, at $600,000, we could operate for two years right now on the money that we would have, and we would be out of money if we kept on adopting budgets and trying to do those things. You look around and you look at the activities of this city and you look at what we do for what the citizens enjoy and what we get to provide for them. What we get to provide for them with safety of an ambulance service and a fire service. What they get with their police in 24/7 coverage and not having to worry day in, day out, if they dial 911, is somebody going to be there? The streets that they get to drive on, the amenities that they have related to our parks, to our swimming pool, to the lake, to the library, those kind of things are the things that make Perry what it is. And unfortunately for us, those things are not necessarily free. Those things cost us money. And as we talked, those things continue to increase in their cost, not because we want them to, but just inherent in all of our operations. That's why we have the CPI. That's why we have the Consumer Price Index. It tells us what it is. And we can run that CPI not based on what the metropolitan area is, what Dallas Metroplex is, but we can run it for the southwest region for communities of less than 50,000. And it tells us year in and year out what that number is. And it tells us, in theory, this is what all of your costs are going to go up. We're not exempt from any of those costs, and I hate to tell you guys, but being a government entity, we're probably on the oversight of that because it is people that have to deal with governments whenever they sell us stuff and whenever they work with it. We're not getting the discounts. We're paying the premiums on almost all of our projects that we do. But that's the nature of government, and that's the nature of what we have to do. So we have to keep all of those things in mind as we build these budgets and as we look at what we want to do, you know, cut costs, get savings where they are, but also recognize the little needs of the things that we have going on and what we have to take care of. One of the items that's coming up tonight and one of the pieces that we need to, that we will discuss at some point, is, you know, to our employees, the increased cost of health insurance, if they have their spouse and children on our plan, is $600 this year. If we do not, if we do a zero pay increase for our employees this year, if they have family members enrolled in our health insurance, they will take home less money in 2016 than they did in 2015. That's not giving them to anything else that they have to pay. It's not covering any of the other costs that they have out of pocket. But they're already $600 less next year than they are. The average number, and Mary put it out, doesn't even get to $1,000 on that 3 percent rating, or that 3 percent pay increase. So wherever we look at what we're really doing for them, by the time they pay their health insurance for the rest of their family, and by the time they go out and buy a couple of gallons of milk, they've already spent anything that we've built into this budget for them. So it's not, to me, it's not an exorbitant piece that we're looking at whenever we talk about asking for those kind of raises. That kind of hits our budget carryovers. The next piece that hopefully, the last, if you guys read your packet and kind of went through, you know, from an overview standpoint, we want to look at utilities and what happens. This, Bryce has put together this chart in the back of your utility. He gives the utility increases by year since 2004 through 2015, broken out by electric, water, sewer, and solid waste. Well, I know the common thought is that every year we do rate increases, and it's just exorbitant. And we've just, we've straddled the operations on the back of our citizens. Look at, it should be about the fourth, fifth page from the very back of your file packet.
Number three.
Back on here. Okay. If you look at this, from 2004 to 2015.
I got it.
It's in the one.
No, I want everybody to find it before we.
It's the red tab. Does everybody?
No, the red tab.
I have the tab.
Did you get it?
Because I lose things.
Michael.
Does everyone have one?
I don't. Without reading. Okay. Simple table here, but hopefully effective. 2004 through 2015 are the rows that we have, the columns being electric, water, sewer, and solid waste. You can go down to the bottom, and I think this summarizes it as well as all. From 2004 to 2015, utility rate increases that were finally passed, I'm not talking about what was proposed to council in those years, because we have proposed utility rate increases in every year. What council actually passed, whenever it came said and done, we have had a 6 percent rate increase from 2004 to 2015 in our electric side. On the water, it's a 10 percent plus there was a mandate fee from DEQ that we had to pass through. So that one just went to pay exact cost that were already incurred. So we don't include that. The sewer had a 10 percent, and our solid waste was a 7 percent excluding the portions that were passed through adjustments from our trash provider.
No, I would note, if we included the base and the mandate fee, that percent would be higher, okay? But I didn't have enough time to go back and compare, you know, that base. That DEQ mandate fee, that was to build the structure over the basins out of the water plant. And then these bases, we created bases, you know, a minimum, a minimum on water and sewer. So if I would have taken that money and brought it back, it'd be more than 10 percent. The other thing I want to note is that in 2012, the rate did go up 3 percent, but we lowered the PCA, so it was an effective zero. And there's a memo in there from Russ to John Cameron that certifies to that. And so, you know, on the electric side, from 2004, other than the 2008 increase, that was the 4 percent increase when Roy Rainey was hired, that was your first, well, it was your second city manager. You had a city manager for 48 hours, but your real first city manager, that is when electric rates took the first real hike off. And then since that time, you know, if you take the effective time from 2008, they've gone up effectively 2 percent. So, I mean, I just wanted to point out, and I went back and looked at all the ordinances. I wanted, there's sometimes misinformation out there about us always raising rates. And so I wanted to go back to the ordinance, at least just bring that forward.
Well, I know in 2007 was my first year on the council, and that was the year we adopted the $600,000 deficit by law. And then, and most of us, a lot of us were new on that council, kind of like this one is. And then we got to go dig into the numbers and find out how bad it really was. And that's, the next budget year, we did the 4 percent hit. And then the idea was that we would get ourselves up to a level where we could sustain ourselves, and then we would slowly keep raising it. So we would have to do that 4 percent again. But as you look at these numbers, and that's why I like this exercise, because emotions will lie to you every time. If you look at the numbers, 2008, we did the 4 percent. '09, we did nothing. '10, we did one. '11, nothing. '12, nothing. '13, one. '14, nothing. And then '15, nothing again. So we're, all we did was, if you look back in history, is just keep repeating what we did before by not doing anything. From 2004 to 2007, we had to do a 4 percent just to keep up with the costs. We're doing exactly, exactly what we did before.
So the only year we ever adjusted the PCA was in '12?
Yeah.
Yes, and that adjustment in '12 on the PCA was solely to bring in line, your PCA adjustment on your utility bill used to always be a positive. And the theory of a power cost adjustment is it goes up and down as the price of fuel goes up and down that we are billed for. And so we tried to adjust that number to a point that we would have some negative months and we would have some positive months, and the net average would roll out to a positive piece. You know, this was honestly one of Earl Hicks's dreams, was that we could get that PCA to be a negative at some months. And so we spent quite a few hours together trying to get the exact formula right with his mathematician mind and the numbers in the database that we had. I think we ran it on about 500 different samples of operations, you know, to get us about as close as we could at that point on what it is. So, but that exercise was solely just to get us a positive or a negative number in any given month on PCA, so that PCA was not just a huge part of your bill. We put most of that back in the base rate that was charged.
Other comments, Mary?
I mean, we can kind of look at water, sewer, and solid waste, but, you know, kind of realize a little bit more the need to increase rates there to help. But even with those increases, we're still not, you know, breaking even in water and sewer and, you know, subsidizing it somewhat from the sales tax, obviously. So that's, you know, I just think this is a really good chart to work from and, you know, will help us in future years, you know, so that we, you know, can inform ourselves and reminder to ourselves and to the public what actually has happened in the years prior to. So my mind gets fuzzy, too. I, you know, I think, you know, that we get rate increases all the time for, you know, for the utilities that I'm on, but when I look back, it's probably not that way. But anyway, you know, I just think this is a really good exercise to follow, points the need out for possibly small incremental increases. A lot of communities base their rate increases on the CPI. And so they look at what the CPI is, and that's the increase that they make, up to a cap. You know, they usually will have a maximum amount on that increase. A community that I was with formerly does that on their rates. And so based on the CPI, their electric was increased last January by 1.8 percent. It's fairly, it's an automatic, they have established an ordinance that makes that, that incorporates that into their code of ordinances, and it's not subjective. It's, you know what it is. You look at the CPI, and that's what it is.
So it's a formula based on, linked directly to the CPI?
To the CPI. And so, and like I say, they raised theirs, you know, 1.8 percent last January. So I think, you know, and the council, you know, if you don't want to have that automatic, that's certainly your choice, but it does have a basis for the increase. And it usually will, you know, you'll have some small incremental increases each year, maybe not have a major impact like a 3 or 4 percent would have. Although 3 percent, when you look at bills, it's not exorbitant, but, you know, it does, you know, for some people, it's, you know, makes a hardship.
The problem there is, is that it would be 34.3 percent if we would have done that.
Right, right, right.
And that would, you know, we would, that would be, we'd be making significantly more money, but we would have significantly more irate citizens, I imagine.
Yeah, because it never ends.
Yeah.
Well, what I look at, too, is it looks like through six or seven years, we had a time of prosperity where we didn't seem to need raising utilities. And past has told me on different committees I've sat on in different communities, you've still got to be proactive and do something then, or you're going to end up in a position we were when Roy came and made all the big adjustments, and then we're going to be here again like we are right now, trying to decide what we got to do.
Well, it's a lot like your retirement fund, right?
Exactly.
If you save for what you're spending right now and what a gallon of milk costs today, thinking that 20 years from now, when you retire, how long it's going to be, then you're going to be hurting, because if you only save a bunch of money for what you're paying now, you got to think ahead and see what you're going to be paying then.
Yeah, because you're going to always have raising in prices. You're always going to have inflation.
Future value.
Right. And the earthquakes haven't been our friend around here. You know, a lot of communities have the old clay sewer and water that have lasted for over 100 years. And you get the drought that we had that got that dry, that deep, and then you get any movement whatsoever. It doesn't have to be an earthquake. It can be a heavy truck traveling. You're going to have, this stuff's going to start breaking down. I mean, it was, it's outlived its means. Yeah, because you're going to always have raising in prices, you're always going to have inflation.
Future, future value.
Right. And the earthquakes haven't been our friend around here, you know, a lot of communities have the old clay, uh, sewer and, and water that have lasted for over a hundred years. And you get the drought that we had that got that dry, that deep, and then you get any movement whatsoever, it doesn't have to be an earthquake, it can be a heavy truck traveling. You're going to have, this stuff's going to start breaking down. I mean, it was, it's, it's outlived its means.
And, and, and my, you know, kind of right along that line, you know, sometimes in those years whenever we do zero percent increases, we just prolong the problems by not addressing anything. And we just keep on pushing it forward a couple more years, a couple more years, a couple more years. That even this year in some of the street projects that we finally said, we are doing these street projects this year. I can tell you some of those street projects have been on our budgets as items to consider for at least the last five, if not six or seven years. And the problem comes every year, we get down to this point and we go ahead and make that same decision. Eh, cut that street project, we'll just fund it next year. Well, we, we've cut it and we've cut it and we've cut it and we've cut it and poor Eagle Lane, I know, I mean, I'm, I'm going to call it out for you, but Bill, how long? Poor Eagle Lane has been on that, as long as you have been on council, I'm pretty sure. Has been one of those projects that, you know, sorry if you guys live on Eagle Lane, I'm, I'm not trying to discriminate against you, but that's, that one is just a prime example of that delayed process in fixing what really needs to happen.
Well, there is one to the south and that's called Southbound.
Yes.
So.
And it's been on the list before.
It's been on the list before, also it needs to, yeah.
And Eighth Street. By the high.
So you can sit down and call out a lot of different streets that do need some attention.
For sure, for sure. All right, guys, let, let's talk for a little bit, but we're really here though is to address the budget tonight. And you all have at your seats, a new version of the budget that was in your packets, um, that you took home. If you will, let me run through real quickly just the changes, um, that have been made in this draft of the budget. Mary went back and, and, and we sat down and cut, um, some of these things.
And added.
And added, yes.
Because of some recent events, so.
There wasn't that. If you'll flip to page nine, um, the first change that we had is on page nine. In, in the last budget draft you had, there was contemplated an administrative fee of four dollars per meter, generating about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars with the projection on it. That meter fee has been removed from this draft of the budget, okay? So that is, that revenue decrease is in what you're seeing. If you'll flip to page eleven, and I apologize, I thought I'd highlighted all of them, I didn't get that one highlighted. If you'll flip to page eleven.
The dash, it's easy to see, it's easy to see the dash.
The dash right in the middle of the page. The, the little gray shaded boxes, they were yellow in, in, in electronic copies, but they don't print in pretty yellow on here.
I got the whole yellow thing.
You know. Gordon, Gordon got it in the special.
Kind of gray, there.
So, you got, you got the real special version of this. Hey, Russ, on page nine, where'd you remove that from? The, yeah, it's, it's about.
On the revenue summary.
In the proposed budget column up in the revenues, the only dash is, is where we removed that from. Page eleven, um, a couple of changes here, the drop box, um, from City Hall for a thousand dollars was removed out of, out of that request. We added a new request, um, because of recent developments and that's down under the street department. The fifteenth and Cedar Culvert, um, needs to be replaced.
I'm Gordon.
It has to be replaced.
Has to be. The one that goes underneath Cedar.
Right there. It's underneath, it's underneath fifteenth street, just north of Cedar.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's that metal corrugated structure. The bottom rusted out. So the, we had the drainage fee in there, which was restricted to those sorts of things, half of it's going to be taken up by just this one job.
That's right, just that one job, yes. Yes. On page thirteen, we have removed any funding for vehicles in the police department this year. There was eighty-one hundred dollars towards one of the vehicles and, and that has been removed out of, out of this budget. Hoping for some additional funding coming, uh, from other sources that we'll be able to fund those vehicles later on in the year and, and do it that way. On page fifteen, we've removed the, um, chest compression system, it's about fourteen thousand dollars. The, hopefully with some of the additional county money that, that they are collecting and the little extra projects that they're sponsoring, we'll be able to apply for a grant through them, um, to purchase that equipment. That is our intent, um, so hopefully not something that we will not have, but something that we can find an outside funding source for.
Mary, we have a full-time grant writer. I mean.
No. We just, uh, we don't, I mean, we, we put together grants.
Well, I was looking at Dixie.
Well, Dixie has. We utilize, we do utilize our engineer and our attorney and, you know, between Dixie and me, I mean, we do utilize, you know, different people. And Russ, you know, comes up with the numbers, but we do utilize, uh, you know, it's, it's a team of existing, uh, individuals that, that work together to do.
Are we missing out on a lot of things due to that?
The major stuff we're getting, we're getting REAP grants for fifty thousand dollars, CDBG grants, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, those are current grants that we have right now that we'll be spending.
The smaller things we just can't.
We've got ambulance grants, a hundred thousand dollars.
Police department's gotten grants.
It's time to go back and get another one next year, another ambulance grant if we can, if we can get for, and we're tagging the ones now. There's probably grants out there like park grants or, you know, some kind of trail grants, exotic grants, you know, we did of course the sidewalk grants, that, that's, that was seven hundred thousand dollars over, over two different sessions. But I'm sure there's some out there, but we're hitting the major ones and, and we're getting them. But, you know, we can always do better, you know? Of course, there's always matches, you know, there's always matches to those grants and you've got, you've got to come up with a match.
Was, is there a match for this one we're thinking about trying to pour on the ambulance?
No, with ambulance, no. Part, part of, part of the, um, ambulance election, um, whenever it was passed by the county. Set aside, um, a fund to help fund projects, capital projects like this for all of the, um, communities. They're five point two, so that, that's where.
That's where that grant would be coming from?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, yeah. On to page sixteen, the, in the electric department, um, the F-two fifty pickup, there's a decrease of about fifty-five hundred dollars for the utility bed on it that has been removed. And likewise the switch gears, the, the final number is coming in at ninety thousand dollars, so about thirty thousand dollars cheaper than what we had anticipated, um, for, for that repair and that upgrade. So you will see, you see that number at ninety thousand instead of a hundred and twenty. The other changes coming are back on page twenty-two, thank you, Mary. The, in the cemetery, the chain link fence, um, we've removed that chain link fence, the thirty-five hundred dollars related to it. And then on the very last page, we have twenty-six, we've removed all the capital projects related to the painting department, um, that were requested at about, we've worth about forty-five hundred dollars. So that is, that is the changes, you know, in, in going through and in, and in the request to, to make changes and, and to bring some of those things down, um, likewise removing that revenue. If we look back at the budget that you all, um, represented at the Monday night council meeting, um, we had a deficit of about twenty thousand dollars that we were going to work with for the year. Today with these changes, um, and the reduction in revenues, the increase of the one project, the cutting out the other projects, we're now sending it about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of deficit and changes that we need to look at addressing.
How much were we at before, Russ?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty. Now we're at a hundred and fifty-seven.
Yes, now we're at a hundred and fifty-seven.
We cut things out anyway. That's what we're always.
So we added some things.
It was the admin fee and we had to add back, I mean, we, we, we had to add back the, the Cedar, uh, the fifteenth and Cedar, you know, culvert. That, that's kind of, I mean, dollars like that, you know, you got, if we didn't put it in this budget and tell you about it today, it's going to happen in August, whenever, you know, it comes time. And so we've, we said, all right, well, Mary, let's get that in there, let's, let's have it, you know, and, and this is how these things change, day in and day out, guys. This is, this is part of city government, you know, we're, we're trying to adopt a plan and we've given you the best plan that we could give you two weeks ago. And by the time we get into this meeting, we've now had another problem. Since the time we started this budget until today, there's almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of new items between the switch gear, between the culvert issue, that we didn't even contemplate. Six weeks ago. You know, and it's not for a lack of planning on, on department head sites, on administration sites, these are just things that come up day in and day out. Whenever, whenever you look at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a portion of an eighteen million dollar budget, it's not a whole lot of money. But whenever you're trying to balance a budget and you're trying to find where those dollars come from, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars adds up really quickly. At this point, uh, I think kind of what, what we wanted to do and where we wanted to go was maybe open the floor to you all for your thoughts related to areas of, of concern in this budget. Some things that we want to, that you would like to see specifically addressed, um, we'd be happy to speak to those items specifically from your all standpoint. And then after we get through that exercise, go back and really then talk about what are we going to do to get this budget, you know? A hundred and, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars is, is too much in my mind to adopt a budget concern. So what do we need to do? If we can get that number down to a twenty or a thirty thousand dollar, um, decrease, I think with our ninety percent revenue and some of those things, I think we will be in line with something that we will be able to succeed in next fiscal year and not just run, run ourselves in a hole. So.
Well, I'll start out, I mean, if you look at yourself in a family situation, and, and, and we are, I mean, it's just in the bigger scheme of things. But we've cut very important things off this, uh, budget, I know we have to live within our means. But we've cut things off this budget that are going to come back to haunt us again next year, not haunt us, they're things we're going to need next year. I mean, we went over the, the budget the first week we did it, uh, and I'm not picking on people, but Brian and his department, they were looking at vehicles. The fire department, the chest compressing deal, you look at that, the important things, the line-saving things, the things that are going to be important, we're putting those off. So in a year, we're going to be looking at these same things and the price isn't going to go down on them. I mean, it's just not. And then if we don't do it next year, then we're going to do it the next year. And it's, in my opinion, and I'm new to this, we're going to end up into a vicious cycle again of where we're behind the eight ball. And I don't like paying the taxes any more than anyone else does, but by the same token, you know, I want the citizens appearing protected. I want, this town's pretty well thought of outside of, of everywhere. And, you know, that's just my feeling on it.
Any of the council lead speak to the topic or something at all?
I, I have a concern. Uh, going over the different departments, looking at the increases in personal services. In the last, in the last four years, count the cycle we're on now, the police department, personal services have gone up two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I think that's a lot. That is on page four, on the budget we got yesterday, did four.
Should be still the same.
Started at a million forty-eight in two thousand and thirteen and now we're at a million three hundred and twenty-four thousand. In that thirteen fourteen, you've got to remember that those are actual numbers at that point. The budget of positions and the dollars that we had inside for people that actually worked, you know, at that point. That doesn't take into account the open positions that we had in the budget that we adopted in thirteen fourteen. As I remember, there were three open positions in thirteen fourteen, um, and Brian might be able to speak more directly to that. But, um, those open positions, you know, that were not filled, um, are the reason that you see that significant, um, of a change there. This, and this year, you know, it is, it's budgeting, you know, the full, the full police positions, um, you know, in our budget that, that we're expecting, um, to have.
To have or we want to have?
There's a difference. It's the positions that, yes, that have been requested to have.
So fifteen, right? Is that what you're talking about or?
Thirteen.
Thirteen positions, yes.
Is that right, Brian?
Yes. And we're asking to increase it to what?
No.
No.
It's going to stay at thirteen.
Yes. Well, I, I think, I think the police department has done a, has done a pretty decent job up to this point, I'm not, I'm not saying that. But we've got another increase now of another hundred and, what is that, a hundred and six, a hundred and six thousand dollars off of last year?
I didn't bring my glasses.
Yeah, that's, we're, we're increasing another hundred and six thousand dollars now. It just doesn't seem like we're cutting things, that's what's kind of bothering me, you know? And I'm not picking on, I'm not taking, picking on you, Brian, I'm just, I think that, that, that's the, the one that stood out to me because it's, it's the most obvious.
Well, when you look at personal services, you're looking at salaries and, and benefits. So, uh, insurance, uh, you know, all of that.
So that's two, a hundred and six thousand, that's two officers, right? Are we putting on two more officers this year?
No.
No, that's, but that's funding the full cost of, and, and inside that, another thing that's happened is we've also had a one percent increase in the cost of retirement, you know? So it's another ten thousand dollars in your equation related to the city's portion of retirement for, um, for, for the officers.
But that's all in the quote, right?
No, no, the, that is, that is just the police. The police pension being separate and they've changed the funding, um, requirement by the, by the municipality. Trying to make up their deficit that they have, um, in the police pension fund, um, from all of their retirement, um, commitments. And so that's their way of getting, getting part of those up.
Legislature.
The issue comes down to how much coverage do you want? You know, to lose one, one person out in the evening shift and the graveyard shift.
Right, we've done two for years, okay? So don't, so don't tell me that we're going to, we're going to cut that.
We can't do that, we can't do that with eight people.
So how, how have we been doing things?
Well, I mean, we must not have been doing this.
There's a difference between eight and thirteen, okay?
Well, during the day, uh, we may have one officer on, but then we count Brian, you know, Brian can respond to calls or Captain McElvein, you know, other that are not normally patrolling the streets, but they can go out and supplement the one, you know, that's on duty, so we've done that. When we were really short staffed, we did that, you know, quite a bit, uh, so, you know.
The, uh, past history that I have with the police department has been guys working twelve hours on. Week after week, month after month, and overtime's great. You see, you have to do it every day for month after month. Brian has been asking for, uh, officers for a long time and these years you see budgeted here, the years that we, uh, didn't have as many bodies out there, we were paying a lot of overtime. And, uh, I, I, uh.
I didn't bring it with me.
Feel like we need to have a full staff if we can keep it. And it's hard to keep, as you know. So I support his efforts in, in trying to keep his, his, uh, number of employees at the, at the full position, even though we won't be most of the time. We're fortunate that our, our fire department staff is, is where they are, and we have the volunteers for that. So we're fortunate in a lot of areas in these two vital operations of the city. I, I don't know, I don't know how we can continue to operate a police force with eight officers with sick leave, holidays.
There's a difference between eight and thirteen, I'll say the same thing as I said to Bryce. So we have to say, we're go, we're either gonna do eight or we're gonna do thirteen, is what you're saying?
No, I'm saying I wanna do thirteen all the time, Bill, I don't wanna go to eight.
I didn't say.
Or ten.
Okay, there's a big, there's, there's five offers.
Yeah, and that's the increase you see.
So how many have to, we have eight, and so if we hired more, then we'd be able to eliminate this overtime expense? Or we still have it at seventy-six thousand?
We have thirteen.
We have thirteen.
And if you guys, if you look back in time in two thousand and six, when I came to the police department, there were seventeen officers.
You might get up and for the camera.
Foot went to sleep, though. When I, when I came to the police department in oh six, we had seventeen officers. And we've had people quit, and we've just managed to happen, I mean, we've been working with what we had. This year's budget, I asked for two additional officers, I wanted fifteen total. The reason being, I wanted three officers per shift. If one person's sick, I still got two out there. Guys on vacation, I still got two. Right now, we're working with two, if somebody takes off, I gotta bring somebody in to cover. Like Mary said, myself, the captain, if there's a day shift, we'll cover the streets, we'll back up that officer. But I don't want, there's no way you can work for an officer at night. We at least have two, and then on the Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, I have a three-man shift, that's where the most activity is. You make a DUI arrest, that officer's tied up for two and a half hours, that leaves one guy on the street. And so that's why I want, I have a three man on our latter part of the week. And I have a detective, myself and the captain. We haven't had the assistant chief position built since two thousand nine. So that's kinda, I mean, my ideal shift department would be fifteen, we do work for thirteen. This budget is, this budget has thirteen.
Has the thirteen.
And I didn't recommend to add the two, yeah, he, Brian requested two additional positions, and I'm not recommending that.
What was last year's budget for, how many officers?
Last, last year's budget.
The budget we're, we're operating on right now.
Was for the thirteen, we saw the thirteen in last year.
We have what we had last year right now.
So the hundred and six thousand dollars is due to.
But, but you're seeing the amendment, it's the amendment piece, because we didn't have all those officers filled. And so you're seeing the amended budget based on what we're gonna end up expenditure-wise this year. We didn't get, we didn't pay the full load on officers until September, I think, November, December?
Yes, the last part of the year, November.
So, so we had about six months that we didn't have a full complement of officers. So that's, that's the jump you're seeing from there.
Plus, Bill, one thing. We, we have a union, the police are a union. They're, they get hired at a certain date, but they need qualifications. They get step increases like most city employees don't have, they're a union contract. So like right now, I need a sergeant, because we just had Lieutenant Carson quit. I haven't posted anything, but if an officer applies for sergeant, there's a step increase on that which increases salary. They, they work, they're twelve months probationary period, contract says now they go to this step, and it's fifty, sixty cents more an hour, which adds up. And that's why you have to plan that budget, you gotta figure the step increase because they are a union.
I was gonna ask about that too, because, well, I got myself confused, because if we aren't adding anybody to the payroll, to the roles, and now we're, this is almost a hundred thousand dollar increase between the two years, is that mostly due because of people moving into the next step, and it just happens that they're all hitting at the same time?
That's something I think Russ would answer as far as, I know he has to figure step increase per officer because they do need qualifications, which sends him to another payroll throughout the year.
The, the point is.
I'm just comparing that to the fire department, who's at only seventeen.
Yeah, the, the, what, Russ, Russ, you were trying to say that that is the amended amount, but this says the projected budget for the year. That should be the end, the end number?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and it is a million two hundred eighteen thousand. Then it's a hundred and six thousand dollars increase to the ones you're proposing.
And, and that number, whenever, whenever you run out that projection, we went six months without filling those positions. And whenever we project this number.
Not the projected, okay, wait.
And so to get to that projected number, we didn't multiply. We only had three months of actual activity at month nine, where we did that projection. And literally just to get those projections, it's divide by nine, multiply by twelve to get where we are.
So these projections are, these projections are current?
Those projections are from March, yes, based on, based on what we had through nine months, multiplied out to get us to twelve months.
So the projection is what you assume is going to be the end of this year, and this proposes what we're gonna spend next year. And that, and that increase is almost a hundred.
It's a hundred and six thousand?
Yes.
So is that from, since we're not adding people, is that from raises?
The raise increase by itself for the police department is twenty-eight thousand dollars. That is, that's the three percent, that is not the step increase. This, I mean, the three and a half. The, the three, the three and a half, or the step increase in hours is another thirty-one thousand dollars.
It's over fifty.
For them, and, and that is, that's the fifty-nine. Then the rest, then the retirement and, you know, you take, go ahead and figure twenty, um, go ahead and figure thirty percent benefits on those numbers, you know, so that's about eighty, probably about eight thousand dollars that we have in that piece. The rest of it literally is, is right off the table schedule. I mean, I can, I can show you the computed table schedule. You know, we, I, I will tell you one thing that's budgeted in there is whenever there is an open position or wherever there's, whatever is open, we budget full health insurance for them, not knowing if, what portion of family, I mean, if they came in as a single officer, like we have hired some single officers, but it's about a six thousand dollar savings for us in, in overall costs.
But for budget reasons, you gotta.
For budget, I've gotta.
Or if you chose not to fill that position.
Or if you chose not to fill that position. But I've, I've got to assume the higher end of cost on, on those health pieces, because I don't know, we can't discriminate and not only hire single people, you know, or only hire people that aren't gonna put their families on our health insurance, you know? And so from that standpoint, we've built in, you know, there's, there's about, well, there's four, you know, that are built in this year for, if, if that position changes, to budget the full health insurance instead of the partials. So that's twenty-four thousand dollars more on your, on your number. So that's a hundred, we're, we're right at a hundred of your hundred and six increase.
And if you don't budget another one, you might as well leave the same figure in there for overtime.
For overtime, yeah. Our, our overtime last year in, in the police department was about eighty thousand dollars. This was as of when we, when we pulled this in March, you know, so between training of officers and getting officers back, and then, you know, working the extra shifts and the change outs and those kinda things, until they were fully staffed, we had, we'd spent about eighty thousand dollars in, in overtime.
On the pay on them, on the spreadsheet, what does the other mean? It looks like only the.
Those are the contractual adjustments that we pay inside of their union contract. They have certain additional benefits for which they are paid asap. And that is, those are the add-ons based on the contract amount for the officers.
Is that like uniforms?
Uniform allowance, assignment pay?
Does that change too?
That, that has not changed, base, that is what it is currently under this contract. It does not include the increase that has been requested in the new contract. So there's even a potential, there's some potential additional expense there that we have not included in this budget yet. We were already trying to cut, we're already trying to cut things, and, you know, and, and I know, yeah, we could add, we could add another twenty-three thousand dollars on, twenty-four thousand dollars on this number for the requested amount of changes for one-off, for these other pay compensations. Not including what is, what's just pay raises, but for other compensations that, that have been requested. But that union contract is still in negotiations, and as you all can tell in this discussion, we're already forgive and faithful.
And that number six, and then, and another sixth year, seventy thousand in, in wages based on what's been requested?
Well, we, we built that part, well, okay.
No, no, we didn't, we didn't.
We did not, yes, we did not build that number, if we, we built in sticking with the three and a half percent. It's what we built in, we have not built in what their full request was, which honestly would be another eighty-five thousand dollars on top of that. So eighty-five plus the twenty-four thousand in one type A. There's, there's a request on the floor from the police of almost another hundred thousand dollars on top of what you see on this paper.
Well, I'm not picking on the, the police department, I, I think we have a great police department. It was just the most obvious.
Yeah, that's the one with the biggest increase.
Right, so it's my job.
In, in the personal service category, yeah.
No, we, I mean, I've, I've got the wage scheduled, I'd be happy to, to show you the computation by, it's actually by individual on there. Bill, I'd be happy to show you how we get to.
So bottom line is, is that if you look on that page two of the budget, which is the kind of overview of the summary?
Yes.
You know, our reserves starting out first of the year will be five, almost five and a half million. But now we're talking about it, if we let this budget go through the way it is, we're decreasing our reserves by four hundred and seventy-five, almost half a million. And so by the end of the month, end of the year, we'll be at about five. And, and you said just a minute ago with Cordell, today's money, what was it, six?
Yeah.
For that particular thing, now, the likelihood of that happening in the next year is probably very, very small, but that's just an example of what the hell do you do if that happened to us? And, and not to mention that it's a negative trend overall, so if you just keep on doing what we've been doing, then eventually this can keep dwindling. If I'm at my house and I see my savings keep coming down, I'm a little concerned about what my, what I'm doing. I need to go look and see what I can change. Now, that's the problem, what do you change to change that trend?
We either increase or we decrease.
Well, you keep on, if you keep on increasing, I know the, the basic gist of the, of the problem here is, is that when we voted in all these sales tax increases before, my thinking as a citizen, and I think it was probably, I justified it in my own mind, that when I vote these in, I wanna know what the money's going to. So I tell, I, I won't vote yes unless this is restricted, so restricted to some sort of project, and that's what we did.
I.e. earmarked?
Yeah, earmark, yeah, if I'm gonna vote in a sales tax increase, I'm gonna vote for it because I think it's gonna go to a specific cost, not just because I'm giving it to the city to spend on whatever they want. So that's kinda what we did, but now, what we're, now we're looking back, hindsight's twenty-twenty, maybe that wasn't such a great idea, because now we've only got the one percent that we can spend on just whatever.
But if you had earmarked it, it probably wouldn't have got passed.
Right, if you had earmarked it, then maybe, maybe I as a citizen would go no.
We are, yeah.
So.
So we have a drainage, three dollar drainage that's gonna be earmarked for strictly drainage?
Yeah. That's, and that's gonna be about a hundred and eight grand, as it sits today, fifty of it just spent. Yeah, of course, if we don't do the drainage fee, then it's fifty dollars straight off the bottom line of the, of the.
I mean, you could also, almost argue for a higher drainage fee.
Well.
The people that are not concerned about drainage are those that don't live at the bottom of the hill near the creek. And I visited three residences in low-lying areas during this rain event, we just came out and talked to the homeowners and asked, did you get water in your house? And by the grace of God, our rain came in, in, in daily spells, but no one got water in their house, and they were as shocked as I was. With the amount of rain we received over that period of time, no one reported to me that they were flooded. But every creek coming out of this city was out of the banks, brim brim. But one I was worried the most about, he said, this is the first year I haven't had this get water out of my ground. But that's, that doesn't mean we don't have drainage issues and, and mosquito issues due to drainage issues. And we don't need to take care of it, we've talked about it for the last few years, that we need to address. And, and we need to do it from an engineering standpoint, not just a fixing standpoint, so.
Slap a patch and go, you know?
Yeah, so that's the argument for this fee. Take care of those drainage issues, and they will keep occurring as people keep rebuilding and we keep covering the grass with pavement or buildings. You're gonna increase your flooding, you're gonna increase your runoff.
Well, just look at Oklahoma City.
So that's the argument for the drainage, that's for this council to determine if that's fair. It's also for this council to put back on the four percent administration fee, if you wish to. I request it be removed. I didn't think, I didn't think we'd had a chance in whatever to get it through.
I would rather do that than a three percent increase on it.
Amen.
Yeah, the part, the thing I struggle with though, on that one, is that if I'm the hundred dollar a month person, that's a four percent increase for me. If I'm, like me, who spends a lot more than that on electricity, it's not that big of a deal.
I agree, and when you're budgeting for your milk, you know exactly what you're gonna pay every month.
Yeah, I guess, I guess from that standpoint, you know exactly what the increase is gonna be, it's not fucks away from one to the other.
One thing we did talk about though was for the folks on fixed income, and, and Russ can, can go into it more, but most of the folks on fixed income never get above the first tier of the electric rate. So we talked about, i- is that not correct, Russ?
Yes, that is correct.
That, that first rate.
Those are people that use less than a thousand a month.
Yeah, and so we talked about is not raising that. So that those folks on fix, eh, for the electric rate, so those folks on fixed income would not really see an electric rate increase. And then, but go ahead and doing it on those, you know, at the next tier that would use, would use more. And we wanted to at least tell you that.
You'd probably have to hit them harder than three though, wouldn't you?
Well, to get, to get that amount of money, you would have to raise that, but we did figure, go, go ahead, speak to that.
Well, raising that, if we left the first tier off, we would need about a three point four percent increase in our
To keep this.
Tier two number, to keep the same three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of utility rate increase. Let me change that number to a per meter charge. On a per meter charge, if we just dropped it to that, we would need a nine dollar increase per meter to get this same, to get the same revenue number. The issue would.
And no, I'm sorry, just so I can understand.
Do no three percent.
No three percent.
Do nine dollars administration and do.
And that still gets us to the five hundred thousand depletion in our reserve zone.
Yeah.
So we're still talking about just getting up the same numbers we have.
Right, yeah, no, that's just, that's just to generate, in this budget, keeping revenue neutral, you could drop the three percent utility rate increase, we could replace that with a nine dollar administrative fee. The, the issue is, and kind of as we were talking. The, the issue is, and kind of as we were talking, you know, the, the reason for putting it on consumption instead of on a fixed fee is number one, as Brad pointed out, just that, but it is a percentage to the individual. The low end user gets a higher percentage whenever we do a fixed fee than they do as if we do it as a percentage of that fee. And so that usually is the number one reason we try to stay off of fixed rate fees and try to use percentage increases on those numbers.
Let me clarify, I'd rather not do either one of them.
Yeah, I wouldn't either.
I thought you were gonna go for both of them at this point.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, don't wanna do either one, but.
Guys, this is, this is a business, okay? We, we talked about that, and I talked about it individually with each of you as we've kind of had those meetings, you know? In running a business, sometimes we have to make decisions that, that aren't our favorite things to do. Sometimes we have to look around and realize our costs are going up, and whenever our costs go up, we have one of two choices. Cut the amount of that cost that we're doing or raise our price in order to meet those increased pieces. And hopefully we do some semblance of both of those, that it's not always just a hundred percent, we're just gangbusters going forward and increasing everything. But that we're also looking at how we could cut and how we could save, you know, on the other side of that. Because that is, that's the balancing act, hopefully that you all in your minds are, are trying to do, you know, with this process. That's why when Mary and I went back through, you know, I mean, we were cutting out the things, you know, that, that we said, these are, these could be excesses that, in survival of this budget year, maybe we could make by without, you know? But then we get to this point and, and we run out of options as far as where to cut without further direction, without the question that Bill asked of, you know, here's, here's salaries and wages in, in this one department, you know? And, and he just used police as, as that example, but is there something there that we can cut, you know? And that's, but those come down to now decisions beyond what are really Mary's pay grade to make, you know? Those are overall operational theories of where you as the council, representative of the community, think that the services need to be for this city. If you guys say we need to change a service level, we no longer need the swimming pool. And I'm, I'm just pulling one out because I, I don't wanna pick controversial things, I'm trying to, trying to stay as simple as possible here.
Center's not open.
I noticed it was empty. But if, if that's the decision you guys make, then, these are bucket chairs, man, I'm telling you. You are gonna laugh at me.
There's no capital out there for chairs. We don't have any capital for any chairs.
Okay, I have one question.
But that's the decision, isn't it?
Go back, since we were talking about police, and this is a small deal. Why do we need three tasers in when we have thirteen officers and we already have twelve? Why can't we just get one? So each officer have one. I mean, I know that's a small dollar amount, but that's just one place to start.
They only have ten tasers currently.
Okay, but in your deal, you said we currently have twelve tasers and thirteen officers. And just report from the very beginning that we got?
That's your request. Yeah. We prepared a, a request.
Right. I know, I know currently unless that's wrong, but we have ten tasers right now because the captain's not carrying one and the two tasers, but my new guys don't have one.
Okay, well, this thing said that we currently have twelve tasers and thirteen officers.
Okay, well.
So I just didn't see why we have to.
Yeah, that, that's.
Yeah, well, it's money, I mean.
Every nickel counts.
Since we're on the police.
Well, I guess I can bring up the elephant in the room, and that's the pay raises. I mean, that's a discussion that I know it affects them. Personal level, I think everybody deserves one, throughout in the weather elements. And the ladies at the front desk, they put up with a lot every month. But on a business sense, there's a lot of people ditch which for one, that don't get raises over here. And for the last five years, there's been a raise over here, so we're talking business sense here. So that's a cost that maybe could happen over here.
Well, my, I, I'd like to see a merit system put together.
I agree.
You're, you're paid, you're paid on the performance that, because you know what? Because I, I've come in late and emailed Mary this, you know, today, I have no problem, people that are performing, you deserve more money. I, I'm a hundred percent buying that, but we don't need to reward bad behavior and pay people that's underperforming. And just give them a cost of living raise, I, I disagree with that.
And there's only fall, one fallback to that, and we've talked about it before, is if you, if you have a personality conflict with your, with your department head that's giving the merit raise, but if there's a problem there, it needs to be set out and worked out too.
You need to be given an opportunity to correct that, and one, you know, one time doesn't, doesn't necessarily deem you as a terrible employee. I mean, you ought to be given a, a performance program that, that you can overcome, and if you're not willing to, then that, then that is on you.
But I agree with everyone else, I don't think you go across the, I mean, you know, across the board like it always has been. Because you've got people out there working their tails off and people out there standing on the shade tree watching the guy work his tail off. And it shouldn't be the same, huh?
Well, yeah, and they're probably making considerably less too, so.
Well. I want to take, put together a merit system.
I still like Tim's idea of cap in it too.
Well, you ought to have a, I mean, there ought to be a pay scale based on what other people in that job make. I mean, mo, all companies, you know, most, most companies have that, where you have a pay scale that you can max out. We need to know what that is.
I think you're gonna, you're gonna budget a certain amount of money in the budget anyway for raises.
That's right.
And that may be the same as what's the three and a half percent was.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think.
Not saying, not saying that we should give that.
If you wanna budget the three and a half percent and then the supervisors can determine based on performance, I mean, which ones, you know, get three and a half percent, we could do that, I mean, in the interim, I mean. Cities our size typically call it how you handle pay increases.
And what, I didn't hear what you said.
Cost, cost of living adjustment, instead of, and we address performance issues throughout the year, so it's not like we just, you know, let people do what they want, we do address performance issues. And sometimes employees, you know, determine that they don't want to work for the city of Perry anymore, and so they leave or they, you know, we have a correction plan for them, and so we address those throughout the year. It's not like we just let everybody just do what they want to do and, and be poor, poor performers.
Do we say that?
That's what, what any of us are saying now.
But, but I'm saying, and on ditch which, they do have performance, you know, people are getting raises at ditch which. So I, you know, when people say ditch which is not getting raises, they are getting raises at ditch which.
Some, but that don't mean across the board it's like that.
Well, I, right, but if, if you want us to base it on performance, we could base it on performance.
Well, I, I just think there ought to be. I think there ought to be a pay scale though, you know, I would like to see, I, I would like to see that. And I have no, again, people that are performing well, I think it ought to be up to their supervisor to say that this one, you know, that, because you know what, if, if this one here is underperforming, he may not get anything, but this guy over here may get six percent because he's such a great, such a very good hand though.
And if you want to go to that system, I would just, you know, it would take a little bit of time, you know, I'd probably say.
Well, we have one.
Did we do that now, didn't you say that at the meeting or two before, that when we have people that are achieving or overachieving?
There are times we do merit, merit increases, over and above what the cost of living is.
And that's done.
A department, a department head will come in and, and recommend an adjustment based on performance.
Now, is that done as a fiscal year, or is that?
No, it's throughout the year.
Okay.
Throughout the year.
I, I know that, I understand that unfortunately, some of our employees aren't paid as well as what they probably deserve. And some of them are paid probably, probably accurately, but it's not fair to say that just because insurance is going up, we'll give everybody raises. That happens to everybody in society. That's a fact of life.
So it's like state news, the raises.
Yeah. And there's a, there's some, unfortunately, unfortunately, in the last eight years or six years, the things have, have taken a horrible turn in healthcare. And we're having an opportunity coming up in this couple of years to fix that problem. But hopefully the citizens are smart enough to do that. But I, I just don't think it's, it's fair to just say, we're gonna pay, just because it, you know, the, the healthcare costs went up, you gotta give everybody raises, you know? I, I'm, I'm for the merit raise system, I mean, I have pros and cons both ways for both systems. But unfortunately, we're still gonna have to budget that money.
Yes, I agree.
That means we're gonna solve the budget problem.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree. I think you still put it in your budget.
Well, if, if we went to a merit system, we would, we would literally have a, a table scale, and every name and every position would be assigned to that table scale, and literally we're just running it out based on, you're, you know, you're a C one, you're an A two, you're a B, you know?
So that gets the ten request for a, a specific.
It would have a, a tiered system.
Absolutely.
Now, now part, one of the drawbacks there though is that those merit, you know, when we go to that system and those pieces are achieved, it's like with, as Brian was describing inside the police department, when those are achieved and somebody moves to that next pay grade, we have no discretion on what that increase is because it's in the table, you know? And so now, next year, I could, I could walk, this year, we're, we're at three and a half percent, I'm, we're at a hundred thousand dollars, you know? I, I could walk in next year and say, guys, everybody achieving grade and moving up in, in the merit system, our number's a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. You see what I'm saying? And you all really, at that point, your hands are tied. You in no way could say, we're not doing that. The only thing you would have to say is go back and change the pay grade system, Mary, because we're not paying a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars next year in step increases for everybody that's met step. So that, that is a drawback I see by going to that, that system, you know?
But again, on merit pay, not everyone's gonna get it.
Well, true.
Only on the step system.
But only on the step system would they get.
And you have to cap it to where no one, to where you raise yourself above that.
Yeah. And, and that's, you know, and so some people at that point would work into, you know? Part of having employees sometimes is, and, and the one that, that Bryce was referring to, I think was the native step piece. At the end of eight years, if you did not improve yourself, you know, by being able to move to the next grade, you were capped out. Guys, we have to make your employees that may not be moving to the next grade, but I promise you are worth more money to the city today than they were last year, you know? And if, if we go to that system, to a step hard tabled system, and we try to operate under that, we might start losing some of our best employees that have been here the longest and have some of the, the best knowledge of the city itself. And, and in a way, we effectively create a detriment for ourselves by, they're capped out and they're saying, well, I'm not going to get this next certification or I can't, you know, whatever their piece is. But after eight years, they can't go any higher. And they're there for now and as long as they are with us, and now we're not giving them a piece.
Who establishes that tier system or that step system? Is that Mary's responsibility?
In the past, that would be Mary's responsibility.
And, and is it, is it then the council that's, that can make a change to that, or is that strictly your?
You fund it.
You fund it. So you fund it only and that's it?
Yeah.
So we have no say as to whether we might want to change that step system?
Well, I mean, yeah, you, you can buy, buy withholding dollars. And it was one of the, Roy, Roy Raines did one of these. And, and so there is one for, I would assume, most of the positions. But after Roy left, I mean, the mayor and I, we looked at that and we saw the dollars, the future dollars that were coming. And then, then we saw that, you know, that, that we probably weren't getting, you know, gonna get utility increases, and that went out the window. But.
It was cost, it was gonna cost.
It was gonna cost more money. But I, I think that a document like that exists, and I think he did five percent steps and I think it was eight steps, but that document exists. And if we can find it, and we probably can, do you know where it is? Well, we can get to it.
So, but, okay, so the step system, you're saying financially doesn't, the, does the, the merit system by itself, can we operate a merit system by itself that can help control cost without giving everybody a raise? And, and just leave it at that? Tim, you're running a step system in a.
Well, let me try and give you a little more confusion here about that. I worked for one of the most bureaucratic agencies in Oklahoma, and we had a merit system. Every position was titled, every position had its description, had its duties, had its pay grades, had step raises, two and a half percent as you achieve in this job description you were in. To get out of it, which I did, my first job description was twenty-one hundred dollars a month. I studied for two years, got my engineering license, and in one month I went up seventy-four pay grades because I got an engineer's license. I didn't know any more otherwise I studied. But the thing is, the merit, the merit system works if the management, that is, this council allows it to work. ODOT has not given a merit raise in thirty years, I guarantee you. I never got one when I was there. I qualified for them, that's why I changed, and we did other things to get a pay raise. They still give cost of living increases. They do a thing they call position evaluations. They try and maintain certain positions, quote unquote, say an engineer, at ninety percent of what the market gives in the state. At least try to achieve that with their pay. To get more than that, you go out of merit system and become a, an employee not merit protected, and the sky's the limit on what you do. So they tried it since nineteen twenty under a merit system. They have the most complex descriptions you would ever see. Every employee is evaluated at least twice a year by his supervisor or her supervisor. And merit raises are supposed to be based on that. How they keep their costs down and salaries at, at that agency, they don't do merit. They don't get approved, they do cost of living adjustments. And there's been a number of years when I worked for, for the department, that Governor Keating says, we're freezing all salaries, we're freezing all positions, no promotions, no raises. That went on for three years. So you, you can have all the descriptions you want to for positions as a guideline for promotion, for considerations, but it's up to us to say, we want a merit system and we're gonna adhere to it. If you're gonna adhere to it, you need to, because at points, like at an agency I was with, one of them, I was with three different ones. It just becomes a lie to the employee.
Well, I was gonna say, to, to handle what we have before us right now.
Yeah.
A well, a, a, any merit system that's gonna work has to be a well-thought-out, well-planned, meticulously planned out thing. So it meets all the needs of the organization and the employee together, so it's a win-win thing. That's not gonna happen between now and the time we have to adopt this budget. So right now, it's the, now, right now, it's the question of how much money do we want to put in the bucket for increases? Is it zero dollars, is it whatever dollars are in here? And then Mary, well, it'll be up to her to goad that out however she needs to. But I, I don't disagree that we, that a merit system of some sort ought to be there, but I think that probably something we'll have to handle in a strategic planning session sometime in the future. For the purposes of this one, we gotta decide how much money we're gonna put in this bucket or not.
Because it, it goes back to what, I mean, what Bill brought up in our last meeting, you know, about, you know, finding ways, and, and once we approve this, this budget, finding ways in the future that raising rates is not always the answer.
Yeah.
And after, you know, it's like, like was said last time, we need to be diligent, you know, in that over this next year, so when it comes time to, to.
So when it comes time to to approve a budget, uh, we have things, you know, in place. Or we have, you know, you know, if a rate increase, you know, was needed, we we've done our homework that we could truly justify exactly, you know, why. That way it don't come down to, you know, if you if you look at agendas and stuff and and um, you know, think of what the people think, you know, as well, uh, right now it looks like, you know, the rate increase is taking care of just solely increases, is what it looks like. Let's let's just think about all that, cause I agree, everybody deserves, most everybody, not, you know, deserves more more money. I have no problem whatsoever, I'm, I wanna clarify that, I have no problem with budgeting money for people that deserve an increase, an increase. I have no problem whatsoever with that.
Yeah, cause we don't wanna them skipping and moving someplace else for better money.
Absolutely.
Uh, are we overthinking this to the fact of merit pay? Mary, when 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 it comes, I mean, I realize we've given across the board right now, but I also trust that if there's an employee out there not doing their job, you take care of that.
Well, I have been for two and a half years.
Okay.
Since I came on the scene, I've been addressing uh performance issues with the departments. And uh, you know, there's always, you know, we work with employees, you know, give them the, what they need to do to improve, to get back, you know, uh, to, uh, you know, an acceptable level of performance. Uh, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, and if they don't, uh, they, you know, may be asked to leave.
But if we.
Do we evaluate?
Do what?
Do we evaluate?
We.
Do we put, do we give them a letter on a way of impre- uh?
Yes, yes. We have an evaluation form that we utilize, uh, rate them, you know, from one to five, and where there's, you know, areas that they fall below. Three is the meet expectations. Uh, it's, we don't consider it an average, three is that they're doing the job that they're expected to do.
Right.
But when they go to two and one, uh, you know, they get down to the bottom, that's when they have to improve. They're given uh X amount of time uh to improve, or, you know, we we look at other options.
And given a list of where they need to improve.
Employees, also employees that are, um, you know, at their one year, you know, when when they're hired, at their one-year anniversary, uh, they they, until they're, um, at one year, we look at them and evaluate whether they're gonna be taken off probation because they're probationary employees for the first year. And so after that first year, uh, we rate them, look at where they are. Uh, we don't wait till the, till they they first year anniversary, if there's issues, we address them throughout that time, you know. And we can extend probationary periods, we've done that before, uh, given them, uh, you know, what they need to improve on and um and all of that. So, uh, so we do that, uh, you know, we probably should do more of that, you know, but, you know. But I think, like I say, in two and a half years, I have addressed a lot of personnel issues that, uh, you know, that, you know, it's not pleasant, but uh in the long run, it's, we're all a lot better off if we have employees that understand that they're expected to do what they were hired to do.
Well, you don't let one go out there and fail for a year and then bring them in and and address them down.
Yeah, no surprises, we don't need to surprise them, you know. So, um, so anyway, that's.
So the discussion we have, are having right now is a three and a half percent across the board to every employee, no matter of merit or whatever, they all get three and a half percent raise. Merit has absolutely nothing to do, merit in this system is not tied to money.
Not now.
So, so we've got to decide.
But they do give merit raises from time to time, I think I remember that from previous meeting, yes, so you could get the three and a half.
They're not, it's not, and and we are, our hands are tied, police and fire have contracts, uh, don't give merit raises to anybody in the police and fire. Uh, and, uh, you know, and I would remind you that any changes in our pay system, we have to negotiate with police and fire. So whether or not that's something, uh, that, uh, you know, if we leave police and fire out of this discussion and all we're talking about are, uh, non-uniformed employees, it's, it makes it a little bit different. Uh, but, you know, I'm just just saying.
Sorry, do you want this one?
No, that's like, oh, I just, I I'm just trying to get my head around where's all this money gonna come from and how we're gonna distribute it out. And then it's still three and a half percent in a in a budget, and we're saying we got problems, but I wanna give them a raise also.
Well, the three and a half percent would disappear. Not everyone would get a raise, it would be merit.
But you still have to fund the.
You still have to fund a merit raise.
Yeah, you still.
You're gonna have to come up with a sum of money.
You just have to.
But by the whole, by your whole roster of employees, you're not gonna have to fund three and a half percent.
But one might get six percent.
Right. Well, that's where I said earlier, we have to cap it. You can't just say, well, okay, you know, you've done a great job, you're getting seven. I mean, you're gonna have to cap it.
Yeah.
Well, it's just like we talked about earlier, I think it was with police, though, you have to budget for the worst. Like that everybody was gonna get the best raise they could.
Sure.
That's what you have to budget for.
Yeah, or you're gonna have a shortfall.
Well, the the bottom line here is, is the three and a half percent's gonna get, is about a hundred and five grand.
Right.
Okay? So, is the, is dropping that three and a half percent, getting that extra hundred and five thousand dollars, is it worth that? By 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 not giving our employees that increase and potentially sending some of them off to the city, is that risk worth the hundred and five thousand when a hundred and five thousand doesn't look like to me that we really accomplish any of our goals, financially speaking?
You're gonna, yeah, you're gonna, you gotta budget some of that money in here. So you're gonna budget seventy-five thousand anyway, if you do merit raises.
Right, yeah, we're gonna say no merit raise, right, we're gonna say zero dollars.
Yeah.
So even if if we cut the whole thing, it doesn't make a difference. Put more back in, makes less of a difference, I don't know.
Well, what's, what needs to happen is there needs to be little cuts everywhere.
Well, here's, here's an idea, and I'm speaking, I have not spoken with any of the department heads about this. Uh, but I know that their employees are very important to them, that's, they're our most valuable asset.
Right.
We cannot do it without the employees.
I agree.
But I have a feeling that departments would be willing to give up, you know, some money out of their materials and services to fund a merit raise. I could be wrong, but I think, you know, if we were to ask them, you know, let's look at, you know, what what can we scale back on our materials and our services, budgets, uh, can you come up with a hundred and five thousand? I bet they could, or maybe, you know, at least part of it. Uh, but, you know, I'm, uh, I'm gonna stand up for the employees on this one.
Well, and I.
And if you wanna do a merit or a performance-based, we can work toward that, I'd be happy to work on that cause I I have plenty of experience, uh, you know, on pay scales and all of that. Uh, I would say it probably will cost you more money.
Yeah, here's where.
So, uh, so you need to be prepared.
I have a small problem about not giving the cost of living raises. And I'll tell you where I come from, okay? We negotiate contracts with the police department and the fire department. And we negotiate in some kind of like cost of living raise, whatever you wanna say, okay? That guy running the street sweeper, or that guy patching potholes, or that guy fixing my sewer is just as valuable to me. That's what those folks are. So how do we tell those folks they don't get a raise? And then we try and negotiate something in the contracts for the the other services.
And I think that's the challenge of things on the way, I mean, I agree with that, but him.
Yeah.
I want everybody to know that I am not a, people that deserve more money, that, we need to give it. Bottom line, find a way to give it to us. And, uh, but as we all have, people that that don't show up for work and do things like that, that maybe they're on their last leg, you know, but would still get increased, those are the ones I'm talking about, it's few and far between, probably ninety-five percent of of the group, everyone deserves it.
And those that are, you know, not doing what they need to be doing, they're not getting any of those, uh, bumps, merit bumps.
And I think that's where we're at, we gotta come up with.
Department head is not gonna come to me and fight for, fight for, you know, someone who's just barely getting by.
Right, we gotta come up with a sum of money that we, that this council feels comfortable with and trust that you take care of of any of the issues, uh, that surround employees that are low performing.
Well, you had to, you had brought up, I did just a minute ago, about asking the department heads to go back and sharpen their pencils basically on their materials and stuff. And I'm all, I'm all for that exercise. I would just like to see, if we did that, what level of service do we think we would lose because of it? Because.
Well, and that's a good point, I I wouldn't wanna.
Just need to know if that's gonna justify, they decrease it up down, nothing happened, the streets never get worked on or whatever.
I would, uh, I, it would be with the understanding that we wouldn't decrease our service levels.
Okay. So, whatever, whatever pencil sharpening we would do there, the expectation would be that the level of service does not change.
Right.
Okay.
Right. That's not an option.
I I would, I would kinda hope we've already done that.
And that's kinda where we're.
I mean, that's the reason we've had meeting after meeting after meeting about this.
And we don't have vehicles in the budget anymore, and we don't have a thousand dollars for a gazer, and we don't have a thousand for this, and we've already sharpened that pencil. And we still are are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than we were when we started. So how do we get, we either have to accept a deficit at this point in time with this budget and move on and and hope and pray that something miraculous happens and we don't do the five million dollar problem? So.
The hope strategy seldom works.
It it seldom works, but but I don't see a way out without the four dollars back in and the three and, three percent and the three dollars and and probably another five dollars on top of that in order to get rid of this deficit. Do you see anything different that we can do?
I I think, I think if we had, if we had the, if we had two dollars of that four back in, I think I would be comfortable that by the time we got a hundred percent of our sales tax that we would project for next year and everything else, we would come out, swear with the board. That does not leave us room for any more room for oopses that that would come up. But if we could get, if we could get seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars of that admin fee back into this number, I would feel comfortable telling you guys, let's adopt this, and from a management standpoint, we will work through the problems and and the shortfalls to make sure that we don't end up at a deficit at the end of the year.
My my company that I work for put a five-dollar fuel surcharge on every invoice that I deliver. And, you know, when it first happened, oh my gosh, I hated it. And now that it's kinda, it's just the norm and, you know, it's it's just part of doing business nowadays, you know, it's it's unfortunate. But, I mean, my company is a multi-billion dollar company, and we have struggles, you know.
But your customers didn't like it?
That's what I said, they didn't like it, but they understand that the the service that we're providing is outstanding, you know? So I think that if if we do this, it's a, it's of my opinion strictly, that we have got to turn up the nu- turn up the notch, a couple notches, on the services we're providing. We can't give the the consumers in this town anything to complain about. I think that we have to go above and beyond the work we're doing now to perform. And I think that if we don't give a cost of living raise, it's gonna send a negative to our employees when we say, okay, we need you guys to real be on your game out here, cause, you know, we we really reached this year trying to get to our our numbers we needed. So you guys, when you're out in the street representing the city of Perry, you know, you work hard and you perform well.
And we also need your help in maybe not three and a half percent, but two and a half percent. Uh, and also the people of Perry, the citizens that are out there listening to this and the folks that are here. Um, if we're relying on sales tax figures, and Main and Main Street has done that for eighteen hundred years, ever since they started, and that is, you better shop Perry first. When you go out of town and buy the cheap gas and still water, guess what? You've just taken some dollars out of the sales tax bucket. When you go over there and eat dinner instead of eating dinner here, which I go over there and eat dinner because I have, there's some pretty good restaurants over there, also. So how do the people have to step up and say, we need some help for the city, and we need better streets and so forth? You better stay here and spend your dollars here and get that sales tax for your backup.
Jim, I think Main Street and the chamber could do a whole lot more to promote that. They're doing a little bit, but they could do a whole lot more.
Suggestions?
While we're there, let's talk about that. Cause we've talked around this table, I mean, we got representatives from from Main Street here. You know, we've talked around this ca- this table about changing the money that we have budgeted for because maybe we don't feel like we're getting our money where it's. I I don't know, I mean, I don't, I'm kinda hu- it's kinda hard to say that if we budgeted them thirty thousand versus thirty-six thousand, twelve thousand dollars a year. I mean, I I'm, you know, Brad said, where where does, where does a hundred, what'd you say, a hundred and five thousand, where's that get us? But if we keep making little increments and changes, those things start adding up after a while. Uh, I I believe that there is room to cut, I believe that we probably need to do that. But what what are we getting? I mean, if if these, if these people wanna talk, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Powers, and then come make a presentation, you know, to us and a pitch of what we were getting from the chamber, uh, I I'd like for for, uh, Mr. Payne to to, uh, let us know what what he, what he's feeling from his organization.
Go ahead.
Get it.
Well, I put together a report that you all should have now. Um, and in addition, I got two emails from the state today that you should also have. You know, the great thing about Main Street is most of everything we do is is kind of under the radar, right? We offer services to this to this city that you would not otherwise get. Um, we have, uh, state representatives, architects, designers, um, I'm sorry, let me just get, get my, get my stuff together here. All right, so we we have a, um, business planner that will come and work with any business here in Perry uh, that will help you develop a business plan, a financial plan, a marketing plan, a merchandising plan to help increase your business. Right, that alone is more of more than thirty-six thousand dollars a year, you know, if you think about that. Uh, in addition to that, we have our state architect that'll come and work with our, um, organizations on renovating their facades and keeping with the historical preservation and integrity of our buildings, which, because of Main Street, every downtown building is now in the National Registry for Historic Places, which I think is incredible. Um, uh, we have, um, we offer free advertising to our organizations in Perry. Now, in addition to the the, I I I'm fairly new to the organization, I have, um, so you have to forgive me, that's why the rest of the members from my board are here, but.
We'll get to that.
But we have, we, we are doing and continually doing more to support the businesses that we have uh, through free advertising for them. Now, we're not advertising for things we don't necessarily know about, it's up to the businesses to come to us. We do branch out and go to the community and 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 try to make our presence known. Uh, if they're not utilizing that, I I think we can step it up and do more to to encourage it. Uh, we can't, right now, we have four, four different grant, uh, applications out. We've done one, uh, facade renovation, we have, um, in addition to that, we're doing, um, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Can you guys, can you help me here for a minute?
The Stacy I, I clinic.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, Dr. Wilda and and, um, and JJ's blow job. JJ, the, uh, city of Perry, the, uh, the, um, senior citizen center. JJ, the, uh, City of Perry, the, the Senior Citizen Center. Bricks are falling out. We're working on, with them on a way to help them fix that issue. I, I, I got an email from, from Linda Barnett at our Commerce Department from the State of Oklahoma today. And it says that she's served on the committee since we applied for this and that this organization is an example that they use for the entire state of Oklahoma. Perry's Main Street is an example that they use for all Main Streets in Oklahoma. Do I think we can do more? Yes. What organization can't step up their game and do more? And if that's how you feel, set the bar. And I, I, I'm confident, more than confident, that we can meet that. But if you, if you even go down in that email to, to another email we got from Jeremy Zeller today, you know, this, the numbers speak for themselves. For every dollar that you are contributing to our organization, we're generating thirty-two dollars and thirteen cents on that dollar to, to then put back into the community, yes.
I have a question about that. That one, just from my, I don't know, intuition or whatever. Where else can you get a thirty-two hundred percent increase in your, in return on your investment? That, how, do you know how that's calculated? Because that doesn't sound, that doesn't make sense.
I can get, I can get the reinvestment reports and present them to you.
I mean, that's a great number.
Like I said, I'm fairly, I know, I know, and I'm fairly new. Like he says, that's, I mean, that alone is, is, is the national average is seventeen to one. So I can get you, I can get you the, the reports.
I was just curious because I saw that and it stuck out to me. I was like, wow, that doesn't make sense. How could you ever expect a thirty-two hundred percent increase on your investment? But I'm just curious.
Uh, we don't want to carry on too long. He's, he's got his report and elaborated.
Main Street didn't get us that original sidewalk grant.
And the internet wired for us.
We got both grants. We got both sidewalks grants, the outside and the inside of the downtown.
Oh yeah, oh yeah.
Was, the grants themselves were written by and prepared by Main Street. Back in the day, we put in a T-21 line to the library, to the schools, to City Hall and to the county. We got that grant because we are a Main Street community. There are grants that are out there that we can get that other communities, unless they are a Main Street, cannot even apply for. So do we do a lot of that? It's been, let me just say that it's really not fair to nail him to the wall because he's extremely new in the part that we've been through such a transition in the last year that we may appear that we haven't done anything this last year, but we have. His report should tell you pretty much everything that we've done. But if you look back in the history and you count the number of buildings around the square that never one have been improved, that's directly because of Main Street. That doesn't mean that our dollars went into them, but in some way or another, either our architect came and did a design for them, which was free. We've had-
The volunteer hours alone that we put into that too, I mean, it's-
That's one of the things that we have to do for the State of Oklahoma. That's track the volunteer hours that we have. We have to track all of the reinvestment that goes into this community. So if somebody puts a paint on their wall, we're supposed to count that, okay? And we turn it into the state. Uh, I, we don't, we don't have that figure right.
I don't have the, I don't have the, the figure.
We've been, okay, and we've been here for twenty years, okay? This is our twentieth year. And nobody knows who we are, okay?
Yeah, I do.
You do.
Well, and listen, I wasn't, I don't know, I don't know, I hope you didn't think I was trying to nail you to the wall when I'm trying to do that. But actually, what I think I'm, I'm really interested in is the, and you kind of lost over, but I think this might be actually the most valued of anything is the thing you talked about, kind of business planning and business mentoring or whatever. That I think is actually a really valuable thing that we need to advertise to people because new startups, we want to encourage more businesses to come here. And actually, the Chamber could probably help out in this too.
I can say that that, that has been offered to several businesses and we can't force them to do it. We really encourage it, try to lay out a great plan to show them exactly what the state can do to help them. If they choose not to do it, that, the-
Is this offered for free or?
It is offered for free.
It is offered for free.
One hundred percent.
If you want to come here and put in a business, start a business, they will help you write your business plan. At the same time, we work with both banks in our community and they offer low interest loans to anyone who participates in this. So you can get a business plan written and they will loan you the money because of that business plan if you want to, okay? We have had our business person come and help several of our businesses downtown. The issue with that is that we don't know that they're helping them because it is a secret. It is between that individual and our financial guy and it's not for the public to even know other than we offer it. That's, that's, anyway, I can go on and on.
Thank you, thank you very, very much.
Sorry.
Another counsel, I'm sorry, just another point. You say you're surviving on sales tax and what we do as far as bringing more people into town and sales and maybe getting more people interested to coming to town, or and or moving here is a big point of ours as well. In fact, just case in point, the little food truck thing we did this past month was a huge hit, which is now beyond going until November, every last Friday. So just little things like that. The revitalization thing we had here three years ago, I think four hundred people went down. Just getting that money generated to keep people coming to Perry is a big difference.
I like the idea of what Brad was saying, you know, encouraging these, to businesses to participate because anytime they can better their business, you know, we can do more business here, it increases the sales tax.
Sure.
Now, like the food truck deal, I know that might have been a last minute deal, but nobody knew about that.
Well, we tried.
Well, and again, we had a little, we had a little hitching again, hitching again up, you know, like everybody has, you know, we made it oops.
But from now on, I mean, the word has got out in the last few days.
Crazy. And it's, and it's good to be fair, and I think it's going to hit pretty well.
Absolutely.
You know, I gave, we actually, like I said, we had a little bit of miscommunication. I said, let's give up on it this month, let's plan on it next month. And Brad said, man, give me a week. And he got it done. And next month, next month.
I'm going to have to ask this, this discussion man. Counsel, I need to ask you a question. Number one, this was not set up as a public hearing, but we do have some individuals here, one or two that would like to speak as citizens. I'm going to ask you to grant that, if you will. And I'm going to ask Frank, I know wants to speak to you. Frank, would you stand before you introduce yourself?
I'm Frank Douglas and I work for EasyGrill. The only reason I mention that is because we have to deal with a lot of the same type of issues that the city of Perry has. I don't know how many employees, while you guys are discussing stuff, I'm texting the people that may have been on the budget somewhere else at home trying to get some information. How many employees does the city of Perry have?
About ninety.
Okay. EasyGrill has fifty-seven employees. In December, we had to make a decision, actually it was in November, we had to make a decision and it was really, really a hard decision. Because of our government has decided to help us out with our insurance. We had to make some serious, serious decisions. Everybody kind of snickers from that, but this is one of the things that costs more money. Just, just a family of three, I'm talking about my family. I've got employees, it's got six, seven people in. Just a family of, we had to make a decision if we were going to keep the company going or if we were going to change. And one of the decisions was, is how the company handles that insurance. Now, I noticed that you, somewhere in there, you referenced something about this, there's going to be a cost, a little bit more cost to the, the employee on insurance. All right. My increase for Frank this year was sixty-five hundred dollars out of my pocket. That was my increase for myself and my, my family. That's three people, okay? We had to make a decision because the company wanted to continue on, all right? And one of the big decisions we had to decide was, is when we do this, how many employees are we going to lose? That's one of the biggest things that keeps our company going, all right? And I'm telling you what, I don't know if you know anything about EasyGrill, but it's hard when you're in, in town with other companies around. We got Stillwater over here wanting to draw employees, ditch which out here, and I'm, we do work for them. I've never run down any of those types of companies. We have to come up with different ideas how to bring business into EasyGrill. But one thing we decided was, is we made it where Frank, the company covered fifty percent of his insurance. And Frank had to cover the other fifty percent and a hundred percent of his family. That was a decision that we had to make and we may have lost overs from that period of time, we may have lost maybe three employees out. Now, you take a family of like, my brother, there's six in that family. That number went up because they helped us with our insurance so much. We used to be able to get insurance as a family for around a hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's what it was costing us. Now it's like eleven, twelve thousand dollars. We didn't get raises for this. We didn't get one extra dime for it, but the insurance companies got it. And that's just part of life. I know that we want to keep employees and everybody wants to, no matter what. But that's exactly what we're talking about right here, is when you're talking about trying to put together a budget, I had to put together a budget. How I was going to keep a company viable. Now, we're out there building a building. We're trying to add on so I can employ more people. Now, how do I explain to my employees that I'm out here building, you know, eight thousand square foot structure out here so I can move a machine shop over here so I can add more welding? That's not real hard, it, it, how do you explain that? Because that guy over here, they can't even pay his utility bill and I'm not picking on the utility, I'm, he can't afford to pay it because he just got done getting hit with twelve thousand dollars worth of insurance increase. Now, a lot of the people, you guys, everybody here knows what our, what our average income is in town here. Our average income, some people want to say is thirty-six thousand, some people want to say it's fifty thousand. I don't know what that number is. It's all over the map. Your, your average is going to be higher than my average. We're all at different levels. But there's decisions that will have to be made and if you got to go back to those deals and there's some people that's going to leave, those are the decisions that's going to have to come down to it. I don't know how to, I mean, we, we kind of, and I know, I understand meetings, you kind of have to chuckle about it a little bit because this is some serious stuff here. You've got to, the decision, how you're going to take and fix it. You talk about street department and half the time when you're talking about the street department, he's off working on something totally different than the streets. That's not on them. That's the job they've been given. But we take and put coal mix back into patches out in the middle of the street where we've had to go out and dig up a hole in a brand new street. This is a brand new asphalt street. We've got a water hole in, leak in it. We went out there and we dug it up, we put it back in there and we put coal mix back in there. When I asked about the decision of it, they said, well, it has to settle over a period of time and then it would probably be filled in. We won't do that. That's not happening. We know that we don't have the money to do it. The only time they're going to get asphalt to fill in that patch is when that asphalt plant's running. Everybody knows that. They've seen it. When that plant's running out there, the city may be able to go out and get someone put in that patch or something like that. But we're not seeing that. We have a really hard job here to try to make this fit. Now, you talk about ninety employees, take ninety employees and just take three hundred dollars away from each employee through a, a week. I'm taking five hundred and forty dollars. Take, take, take that money back and you find out how much you can come up with. I can, I just did the math just with my little company that we're doing and I can come up with that budget shortfall right there. I'm not saying you have to dump it all on the employees because yes, you want to keep your employees, but you're sitting here thinking, well, they all got to have, they all got to have, they all got to have. You look at the biggest expenditure, you're going to buy electricity. You're going to buy that electricity and you're going to sell that electricity. You put a markup on it. You don't have a choice in that. That's what it's, that's what it costs to run those power lines. That's what it takes that. But you have to look at the highest dollar amount and you figure out how you can start whittling down just like you do in your own budget. You don't take and go after these little bitty dollars over here. It doesn't amount to anything. You can't chase it hard enough.
Thank you, Frank.
Can I add something to what he-
Go ahead, Joanne.
To what he said that he made, didn't make clear is that, yes, we took an increase on the health insurance and we've taken an increase just like everybody else in the cost of living and the cost of doing business, the cost of buying food, cost of buying gas, whatever. And as far, and I think this is important because it has to do with your deciding whether or not you're going to increase people's pay with the cost of living rage, wage. Frank has not had an increase in his hourly wage in probably seven years. So when he stands up here and tells you that we took an increase of sixty-five hundred dollars or whatever he said it was in the year, we didn't have our wages increased either and have not for like six or seven years. So we're still making do. And probably our renters are in better shaped houses than what ours are because people look at us sometimes, I think, and they think Frank makes mega bucks. Frank doesn't make mega bucks. But also, he tries to make sure that his employees do get the wages that are feasible with the amount that the business is bringing in, keeping that business viable, but also has to, to evaluate, okay, there's a point where you can't give any more for a position or a raise or it just isn't there this year to keep the company going. So you have to make a decision. Do we keep a company going or do we keep raising rates? There's a lot of people in the city of Perry that have done without raises for years because the companies could not give those raises and keep doing business and keep those employees employed. So those are things you do have to weigh. But yeah, some of us have done without and we have been doing without for years and still we're paying increased costs every year. But, you know, you talk about people on a fixed income. We don't get to choose what we get paid because something else goes up. I don't get to go, or Frank doesn't get to go to his employer. And when I was working, I didn't go to, get to go to my employer and say, okay, well, it's costing me more. I need you to give me more money. No, my income is what it is. If I work at that particular place, that's what it is. And when I did work for Southwestern Bell, our salaries work and we, we had, you reached, after four years, you reached your top pay grade. That was it. And all you got were cost of living raises or raises that were contracted because it was you, you know? So, I mean, after a certain amount of years, you, you worked out other than cost of living. So, I mean, some people's, you want to say fixed income, but I don't get to choose what I get paid. Frank doesn't get to choose what he gets paid. The employer chooses that. And you either work for that or you don't. I just wanted to add that because he's not getting the pay increase either to go along with that health insurance increase that everybody's getting.
Thank you very much, Joanne. Does anyone else want to address the council? Thank you, counsel, for allowing that. Appreciate it. Any of you have any other comments or do you want, you want to think about? What we want to do, we want to instruct Russ as to what we are going to do with this budget.
I want to ask Wheatley something. The gearboxes you have on there, was that to fix the ditch which problem or to add? Because I remember you said something about buying more.
That's the ones we need to, that's the ones that's yet that we need to replace.
And that's the ditch, ditch which ones?
Right.
And you said those would be good as a backup, but we need more?
Now, there's one that we are going to be replacing that I think is probably good enough for us to keep for a backup for them.
Okay, so in the budget, what is, what is in there right now? Is that the ditch which one or?
The ninety thousand, they're the, yes, the ninety thousand are the four.
Are the four.
Are the four switch gear.
All of ditch which.
But all ditch which. But it's all ditch which, yeah.
So didn't you say something about buying another one or, or is that it?
That's it. That's, that's all that, that's all.
We were six of them.
Yeah, I thought it was November.
We already replaced two.
Under the conditions that we had. We replaced two. And so we have four more. One, you know, one we already have ordered because we know that it's, you know, on borrowed time. And so then, I mean, they're all the same age basically and so really for, for reliability- And so then, I mean, they're all the same age basically and so really for, for reliability, you know, we feel like all four, you know, need to be changed out, so.
This, this situation, um, because I'm unintelligent in it, is this all over town what's causing the flickering problem or?
Basically what.
I mean, what, what are some conditions to fix that? Because that is a heat being issue with everybody.
I'm not pointing at you. I'm actually pointing at Frank. Uh, one of your flickers just happened the other day. The way our, the way our electric system set up, not to get in real deep, but it's like breakers on a house, okay? That reset themselves. And they'll reset themselves three times like out of our substation. Good example is a truck come and hit a line in Franks. Shook everything around, boom, you had a, a blink. Comes back on. If everything, if it says, "Okay, everything's okay," then it stays on. If it doesn't, it'll do it up three times and then you're done. I'd say ninety percent of our outages are animal related. And we've got protection on things, but you just, you can't keep, you can't keep them off of everything, basically.
Okay. I'm just making sure that wasn't an issue somewhere else.
Now, the three-time resets, are that oil reclosures?
Uh, no, they're a, they're a vacuum breakers.
Oh, okay.
And then we have to literally, you know, it's not like I have a smart board that tells me where things are at. We have to literally go drive the line out, see if we can find the problem and then go manually turn the electric back on. It's like, yeah, Frank tells me where most of the problem is. Well, that being said, I know this, we don't want to get in this quick discussion. It really doesn't affect it, but you, councilpeople and, and the citizens are my biggest troubleshoots. You know, call in when you see, "Hey, it flashed right across from my house." You know, that saves us thirty minutes of driving to town now.
Well, and that's, that's labor right there too that everybody's paying.
Right, that's exactly right.
Last year it, it was put in a budget for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think it was last year, to do some work on the electrical area on North Seventh Street. I, I've never heard if that work ever got done and what happened to that, that budget money.
It did not.
It did.
We were, uh, part of our problem is we're, we can't get our staff, we can't get fully staffed and it's hard to do projects like that. We, we troubleshoot problems, but when it comes to projects, we just don't get it done, so. But, um, I don't, but we still have that in the mu, in the budget.
The, the North Seventh, I don't think is in the budget this year.
In current year?
Well, yes, the current.
Current year, current year.
Yes.
If you're out of money, you're out of money.
Well, if it's in the budget now, it's available to, to go ahead and, and do the project. I mean, you know, to do the work.
Unless we use it for another project. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I mean, things come up, you know.
I don't, you know. I think we have every intention of doing it. It's just the, you know, the matter of, you know, having people to do it.
I haven't got that phone call lately, but I got a lot of them last year's. I was asking.
Well, we have some lines that had to be replaced with vertical, underground replaced with vertical. And still he can't do that by himself or just one guy. They got to have a crew.
Boy, Dwayne picked a good time to go on vacation, didn't he?
Yes, he did.
I'd like to say thank you very much. I drove out by there several nights and you were out there at dark and, and all that. And I, I'd just like to say for myself, thank you very much.
I know the people at the plant were just related with how it turned out and they're, they're running. If we get these, uh, other switches in there, it'll be good.
Okay, so, back to the budget. We have to the twenty-third to approve this, right? If we don't want to do it with any more special meetings, we gotta get it done and adopted by the fifteenth. This is Monday.
Which is Monday.
Okay. So, do we need to not leave here until we give him good solid direction?
That's basically what we need to do.
So, I'm trying to think through the justification of the three percent increase. I'm trying to, we keep mentioning about this being a business. And from time to time, we, when we sell our products, we do a price increase on them. And we do that, when we do that, we justify it by looking at the costs and all that kind of stuff. But another thing we do is we look at our competitors and we see what they're charging for and make sure we're not pricing ourselves out of the market. If we try to equate that to, to this, our competitors are other towns. Like for instance, I have people tell me, "Well, heck, I'll just move to Stillwater then if we're gonna have to keep paying this." And so while we're not Stillwater, we can't really compare ourselves to Stillwater, like you said earlier, they are a competitor as far as a citizen goes. And you guys did a study, then you, you took a specific bill and ran it with different towns?
Well, we, we did it with-
To see what the, what the differences would be, if they'd pay more or less. I would like to know what those results were.
I've actually done the same thing too. It's not the same as what that was. With mine and another Stillwater bill, and this was before I was in on the council.
I'm just trying to approach this from more of a scientific, than just say, "It feels like we just need to bump increases because we gotta cover this dollar."
One, one little study we did, we did a minimum load and the person's bill would increase with this rate.
Like winter or summer?
Their, their, their bill would, the bill in Stillwater would be less than ours. But at the peak times, when they were paying a, a lot of money for like-
In the hot.
In the hot summertime in Stillwater, it would be more significant.
I don't see how you can compare us to Stillwater or any other large town around this. But, but there, there's zero comparison in my mind. And I'll tell you why. They have other avenues of income.
That street sweeper fee every month because I pay it for N O C.
Yeah, the other communities have other ways to raise funds that we don't have. And we may have ways that they can, they can't use.
Or that they actually charge it and we could.
Yeah, and, and we talk about it. And so it, to me, it's, it's not even fair to, to even do this study.
Well, and, and I, you know, I agree, but when someone came to us and said, you know, that we were thirty-five percent higher than Stillwater, you know, we felt like, okay, we need to, you know, let's run, let's run the bills and see what they are.
Well, that's why I just want to know what the numbers are because let's say, I don't think anybody would make this judgment because I, I think they would be more sane than this. But if the only reason I leave the community is for electric, then where else would you go? And would you go to Blackwell, which is probably more reasonable to compare to? Did you run the Blackwell numbers?
Yeah, Blackwell, um, I mean, we ran those, compared, I mean, we're neck and neck about the same.
And I think, I ask Russ, but did you know what the kilowatt hour they charge? Do we know what that is?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
I'd be interested to know the difference of what we charge per kilowatt hour.
Plus, well, you know, like I say, we're, we're neck and neck.
I just did the rate ordinance, so I can provide that to you.
That would be interesting to know.
Can you tell us?
No, and it's all numbers, you know. I'm not a number guy.
If there's a word, you'd remember. Cool level of budgeting, price, no numbers.
And on, on Blackwell, they are implementing a three percent rate increase.
Well, here, here's the whole thing with, with the way we're talking about comparing those. We don't know what type of house that is, how efficient it is. And that's why I'm asking kilowatt hour. I'd like to know the kilowatt hour specifically compared to what it is.
I, I can't. I live in Perry because I want to live in Perry. And I, and I think the majority of the people that live here want to be here. And I can't see that, I'm not anyway. My bill's gonna go up twelve, fifteen dollars a month, maybe?
Mine's gonna go up four dollars and four cents.
Well, not if you get a-
No, I'm talking about everything.
No, if you get a, a three dollar drainage fee and a four dollar administration fee, that's, that's seven bucks right there.
Seven bucks.
So your bill's not going up four dollars?
It's going eleven. So. Three percent increase.
But I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is, I can't imagine, and here's my, I mean, I'm not trying to be negative, but I can't imagine someone wanting to pick up and move for ten, let's say ten dollars a month or fifteen dollars a month. That's a hundred and twenty dollars a year if mine goes up ten dollars a month. The moving expense alone is gonna kill you. You're trying to ju, I can't imagine someone saying, "I'm gonna move to Stillwater because my bill went up ten or twelve dollars."
Rent's gonna be higher, the cost of the house is gonna be higher.
I'm not saying because of that, but I'm saying that there are people that have said that to me before this increase.
Well, people don't think things through.
Yeah, people have said that to me too for the last two decades.
Yeah, they do. People, you'll, you'll learn that, and I'm not saying bad, okay? People say these things because it's in the heat of the moment. They're upset. But when they've really stopped to realize the services that we provide for them, no one tells you you have to buy electricity from us.
Uh, yes, they do.
But you could, but you could buy the minimum. I mean, you don't, you don't have to use it if it's there. No one says you gotta use it. I know, but what I'm saying is, exactly.
You just turn everything off.
You can flip your breakers off. We had a gentleman here the other day said the statute says you can use a lantern, remember?
Well, I mean-
They have to have water.
Yeah.
You can't get to, to be sanitary.
Well, at this point, at this point in the fiscal year, we're, we're not gonna be able to solve, the biggest problem that's worrying me isn't this budget. Okay, I, I think we can do stuff to fix and get ourselves, adopt a budget. We'll fund next year's services and everything will be fine. What I'm worried about is a decade from now. And, or even maybe five years from now, and we continue with this depletion of the reserves, we're not gonna solve that right now in June because we're so close to the end of the budget year. There's nothing we're gonna come up with that's gonna solve this problem. We're gonna have to sit down and really seriously look at our, at our entire organization, meaning the city, and figure out a strategy going forward of how we're gonna treat this problem. And I know we're doing development and stuff out there on Highway Thirty-five, which I think is really great because it's gonna help that sales tax piece. But that's, that's just one little bitty piece. It's not gonna, that's not the magic bullet. So we still have a lot of work to do. I think it's great that we have these fresh faces here because they have new ideas. And so that's great. So for the purposes of this conversation, you know, I don't see how we can, without making a, a big dent in our budget that we can't, we have to, I think we'll have to accept this rate increase just to keep us going for this next year. Because, because of that whole zero, zero, zero percent increase that we did before, we knew that, that wasn't gonna be sustainable. We have to have it at some point in time. This one year, we have to do it.
So if, if that's the case, then what we need to say is, in order to get us with a zero deficit, Mr. Meacham, what have we gotta do to get there? Now, is that a two percent increase? Well, it's up to us to, to accept what, what that, that pro, that end result.
Well, I don't, I don't think this year we're gonna have it.
Can I sit here and say, "Well, let me see, no, if I do a two percent here and three percent there and a four dollar here and a two dollar here," I can't say that.
Jim, he said that he'd be comfortable with a two dollar administrative fee, a three dollar drainage and the, and the three percent tax.
And the three percent.
If you want to take the opinion of the chief financial officer.
And that leaves the three and a half percent pay increase for the, for the employees.
Yeah, and then allocate it in the manner, I mean, we're probably gonna have to negotiate a cost of living raise with the unions. But, you know, we could hold off on, if you wanted to, cost of living raise for the balance of the employees and, and then talk about this merit pay scheme, you know, that, that we're talking about or not. I mean-
So we could, we could come back in, uh, three months from now and say, "Okay, now we've, we've played with the figures and the numbers and all that good stuff. And now we can go ahead and say, yeah, we can give a two percent raise or a three, three percent raise to across the board?"
Yeah, I could, I could do a budget amendment for next year or year after, but not next year. Well, I mean, we'd like to see a budget that, I suppose we'd like to see a budget to dollars. I mean, what you're expecting from me is, is to get contracts with the unions like we have every year. At least I'm hoping that, you know, that, that we can get a contract again this year. Uh, and, and I probably need, you know, that three and a half percent, that the requests are, are bigger than that. And of course, you know, we can tell them, "No," and then see what happens. You'll be spending more money on me uh, because that will, that will move on and, and then there'll be, you know, probably ultimately an election and, uh, I, I mean, that's one of the problems you have with collective bargaining, but you, you know, we have to in good faith bargain. That's what the statutes say. And, and, uh, doesn't say you have to give them a raise. You have to in good faith bargain.
Well, regardless of what we do, if, if we're gonna go down the, down the road two, three months or six months and say, "Now we're gonna do these merit raises," we still gotta have money in the budget for that. So you might as well just fund, fund it the way it is. And-
Or not, fund it at all.
Well, if you don't, if you don't fund it at all, yeah.
To Frank's point. Makes that our decision.
Exactly.
And not fund it at all, and then we can do a budget amendment later if we have the funds. But if we don't have the funds, then it stays, hangs.
I have, I have a couple of ideas that we've been discussing that, that, that will come up, that will come up later that don't involve, uh- Yeah. What, tonight? So I'm waiting. I'm ready now. Well, well- Well, very quickly, one of them, when I came here in nineteen eighty-six, we did a, uh, I was negotiating the O N G franchise in Enid, okay, for Enid. And I said, "Let me just negotiate the franchise here in, in Perry like I did in, in Enid." And, and, and the folks in Perry said, uh, because our franchise came up every twenty-five years in order for the gas company to use the rights away, they have to have a franchise. Now, under the statute, there's an exception, which if you don't have a franchise, you can charge a gross receipts tax, okay? A gross receipts tax can only be two percent. The customers pay this, okay? And it only applies to residential and commercial. It doesn't apply to industrial, okay? Uh, right now, this, in a franchise, you negotiate and there's other advantages in the franchise. Like for instance, if you're doing street repairs, you can require the gas company to move the lines at their own cost. Okay, which can be a real savings if you're doing street projects. Also, Enid, North Enid, other cities have passed a four percent franchise. If you doubled that franchise fee and then picked up the industrial customer, okay? You know, I, I'm just throwing out a number. It could be sixty or eighty thousand a year, okay? And everybody else is collecting that. Since nineteen eighty-six, we have been collecting, you know, two percent and we dropped off the, the industry. So that is an, that, that is one opportunity. Uh, plus you can pick up costs, uh, when you do street projects, not having to move lines. And that is something that this year that we would like to discuss. You know, we've gone on for twenty-nine years on this, on this two percent gross receipts tax. So that's, uh, that's one avenue. But the one other thing that we ought to say, you talked about the eight-hundred pound gorilla room. And I am not suggesting anything, but it would be unfair not to talk about it, at least briefly, okay? And that is, we did a computation, if everybody paid the residential rate, because we have different rates. If everybody paid the summer residential rate throughout the city, how much, without any increase, how much money can we, could, could we raise?
About four hundred thousand dollars.
Four hundred thousand dollars. The problem is, is that one, one person would pay three hundred thousand of that. You know, there'd be one party that would pay three hundred thousand. So our commercial rates are less than our residential rates, okay? And, and, and in some communities, there, there is one rate. I mean, there is one rate. In other communities, commercial rates are more than residential rates. In our community, commercial rates are less per kilowatt hour than, than residential rates. And that is another thing that's been built into the, you know, that has been built in the system and has been carried forward. You know, one thing that we can, you know, that we have talked about as a long-term strategy is to look at a, uh, at, at a, at a rate ordinance. The truth is- A rate study, a rate study. The truth is, we're not charging enough- The truth is, we're not charging enough for sewer. And the reason I know that is we have a sewer master plan that tells us these projects that we need to implement, okay? And we don't have any money, and there it is, that, that we need to implement, we don't have any money, we don't have any money for that. In, in one of my other communities, we were actually able to lower electric rates, but we raised water, sewer, and trash. It was a net zero, uh, e- effect on the income, you know, on the total income. But it was, it was hugely greeted by the public to actually get a rate decrease, an electric rate decrease. So, there are other opportunities here. You know, there's a rate study opportunity, there's this, uh, there's this ONG franchise versus the gross receipts tax. There are other, are other opportunities. I bring those up, you're my client, but, you know, it isn't the kind of thing that, that we can get done in order to capture a budget. And I'm not sitting here arguing for increasing all the, all the rates either. I'm just, you know, telling you what's some opportunities.
What is the percentage on industrial that they're less than the residential?
Uh, it, it, it's like two, it's like, uh, two pennies per kilowatt hour, essentially. Now, you'd have to look at it at each phase, but it, it's, it's an eight cent rather than a, than a ten cent. But, you know, th- then it steep down and it changes, uh, but, I mean, that's the way we, it's always been.
Can that be amended? I mean, can I do that?
All of our rates can be, uh, all of our rates can be amended. In Takuah, there's one rate, everybody pays the same rate.
So, why haven't, why haven't we discussed this kind of stuff before instead of, we just talked about it?
We have, we have.
Not, not with us.
Not with, not with us.
I've never heard anything about charging materials more.
With new, with new people, we had, we know nothing about this kinda stuff.
And one thing I also wanna keep in mind is that, that's a start, but you're still charging people in the community more instead of trying to find other ways for income. I don't wanna lose that focus over our time in the future.
Well, the, the methods of income for us as a city are limited. And why we gotta look at our structure of our sales taxes, uh, to, uh, at some point when those ones we have that are paying for, uh, restricted uses, uh, they start hitting us their sunset, and we need to look at continuing them unrestricted.
So, when is the, what's the notice?
That'll be a vote of the people, we'll, we'll require some.
Next one's something in eighteen?
January one of two thousand eighteen is the first.
So, we, so we, I mean, we could go to the voters now on that one.
Yeah, you can vote on that now.
You know, we can, we can take it back out to the voters now to have it extended, you know, and, and, uh...
Capture that money now.
Capture the money now, or we can wait, you know, or do it, you know? Uh, I mean, interest rates are pretty darn low, so if you, you know, if you go back, you know, out for a vote. Now, you know, we've just had a vote, you know, so the citizens may not be as inclined to vote yes on a, you know, on renewal of the street tax, but the county has had a vote and on other issues, so... You know, you, you look at the timing and try to, you know, time it, you know, so that we're not... And it's not increasing the sales tax, it's just extending the sales tax, basically, is what the vote would be, so...
Yeah, seven hundred and some odd citizens voted for a ten-year extension, so...
And we'd certainly wanna go out, you know, for a vote, you know, close to the time it was set to, you know, expire.
A lot more will be apt to vote to, for something that is not an increase.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Looking at increase.
That's the only way we're gonna get a handle on these.
And that's the kinda stuff that I'm talking about, that I think Derek's talking about too, that we had heard this kinda stuff that we could do. It's a little disappointing, you know, that we haven't, that, because that, you know, it, it allows you to make a better decision on stuff. That's, that's my whole thing behind it all. I, you know, I'm not against increases, I'm not against any of that, but what avenues have we taken before we tell the citizens it's coming from there?
Yeah.
That's what we need to explain to these folks in the room right here. That's what I'm looking for in our strategic planning, is to take those taxes that we're currently collecting and have them restricted, and when they sunset, you either start new projects or you unrestrict them so that we can hopefully, uh, get a handle on these utility rates. Because utility rates and a one-cent sales tax and nothing else, they're gonna keep going up, and they're gonna go up higher than what we're doing at now in the future. Because our costs are going up, our system is, 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 is getting old. Our sewer system is almost, it's almost critical. So, there's things we gotta do right now, and a strategic planning will do that. And we've got to look for other avenues of support to, to keep the, going back the same cow for, for our milk and income, that's the, our, our electric rates, trash rates, sewer rates. The only way we're gonna do that is to unrestrict some of these sales taxes. And that does not increase your monthly cost, that depends on people shopping here, take care of it. And that's another avenue where we're looking to try and improve sales tax gathering with new businesses doing retail work.
Well, one business in general is hurting the sales tax, in my opinion. And that's that, that gas, that monopoly's got going on in town is ridiculous.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would buy gas here in the morning and not have to evaluate, "Oh, can I make it to Takuah? 'Cause it's twenty cents cheaper on the interstate." I mean, it's ridiculous, and that's our own sales tax.
There is an al- there is an option in Perry.
There is an option, but it's normally higher too.
What's that?
And I go there and pay.
Uh, you're talking about Conoco? Um, well, they're not open when I go work.
But there's another, um, you know, convenience store that's not owned by the ones in Perry, that's on I-35.
Yeah.
It's usually very comparable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two or nine.
I wanna buy real gas.
Yeah, it's usually between a couple sets.
Part, part of the problem is, is, is the local convenience stores, they don't have ethanol. It's full, it's the fully loaded, I think there's only one of their stations that, you know, offers that.
Mr. C's the only one that doesn't have ethanol.
Right.
Yeah.
All the rest of them do.
Okay, you're right, you're right.
He sells straight unleavened fuel.
If I had, if I had to make a, a proposal to, to you tonight, I, I would say that we, as far as wh- where I'm at on what I want from the budget, I, I would say cut the, the four-dollar administration fee and then fund the rest of it. And then we, as a council, not next March, but now, we have to get very aggressive with the strategic plan. Because there's nothing we're gonna do, Brad said, that's gonna change this budget that much. We've got a week.
And so, you're saying adopt, adopt a budget with a hundred thousand dollar general fund deficit and a fifty thousand dollar utility fund deficit?
We're basically doing it as proposed today, because-
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that-
Well, and then if, if you, if there's anywhere, I mean, Mary, Mary brought it up, I mean, I don't wanna cut any services to our citizens. But if, if there's something that, that one of your managers or your team leaders think that they can, they could do without. But, but we have to get very aggressive with the strategic plan to fix this problem. And I think that some of the stuff that Bryce, you laid out, is great. And, and I, and, and I, and I've been on the council for six years, okay? And I hate to say this, whatever Russ says, I believe in a hundred percent. He's the man, as, as far as my, I mean, I, I trust his firm or his firm.
He's not gonna leave the room now, 'cause he's his.
I've, I've ever been around, okay? I wouldn't totally resist it, I wouldn't tell you that directly, okay? 'Cause she just twisted to make it sound like it was all about her. But, but anyway, seriously, I mean, the Meachams have done so much for this community that, that, uh, it's un, it's unreal, you know? Russ, we appreciate your firm, and, but that would be my proposal if I had to send you an address, but that's from me.
I have a question.
Yes, then.
Okay. In this new budget you showed, you showed not funding for the police car. How did we decide not to fund for that but still fund for the others?
Because we have future revenue that, uh, well, I'm just gonna lay it out there. Uh, with the agreement with the tribe, uh, when they opened, we received two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
And a previous council, um, while they didn't restrict it to... Yes, what?
He just barged.
Had something in my throat.
Uh, I'd, I'd have to go back and, and read the minutes, but, um, I think, uh, the proposal, maybe Tim can help me with that because I think the proposal maybe came from Tim, was to-
Priority.
To prioritize, uh, for police and fire. You know, the, the, the use of those funds. It's obviously this council's decision on how those funds will be used, and we don't have them today, and I wouldn't recommend-
And they're not in this budget?
And they're not in this budget. But with that understanding, uh, we would look at, uh, police cars, uh, possibly, uh, at the time when that money comes into our-
But that money was not earmarked.
It was not earmarked, but it was, it was indicated that it would be given, uh, priority. Priority, but it would still be a council decision on how it was to be used.
Well, could it not go for any of these other vehicles and maybe just not get a few of these this year?
When we get the money.
Just because, you know, we don't have the money. I mean, not saying all of them don't need vehicles, but I just, come on.
Some of the vehicles that you're, um, you know, that you're looking at, um, I think I-
Is it just three, three vehicles that's in the budget now?
Uh, we have, um, street has asked for a three-quarter ton flatbed, police for-
Well, no, I'm not talking, we've cut, what, what is still in this budget right now?
What is still in the budget is, uh, twenty-two thousand for a three-quarter ton flatbed truck for street.
Yeah. Two for the sewer and one for the electric, right?
And fire, uh, command vehicle. And two used ones, thirty thousand for water, um, for two, two used vehicles for water. And, um, electric, uh, uh, the request was reduced down to thirty-eight thousand, six twenty-four. So, um...
So, total vehicles is what?
Uh, one...
I mean, I'm not talking dollars.
Hundred thousand.
In the budget?
Oh.
Yes, all those vehicles.
Add the separate.
Mr. Hold on a second, Mr. Calculator.
Twenty-two, forty-nine, seventy-nine, seventy-nine.
Eighty-seven thousand. Oh, I didn't get the street. Twenty-two, twenty-two, so a hundred and nine.
So, there's a hundred and nine thousand dollars in vehicles at this point in time, and the priority is two hundred and fifty thousand coming from the tribe, is that correct? To be spent on fire?
Yeah, on police.
On police.
Fire and police.
Well, but I haven't, but I didn't recommend, uh, not funding the fire.
No, I was just saying the priority for that money was said, fire and police.
So, if we took all of the vehicles for a hundred and some thousand dollars and added it with the four police cars or whatever he wants, does that come up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
It was like two hundred and thirty-seven thousand that I added up to that.
And then for the tank.
And that would be all of the vehicles that are funded from that one source?
We still have a deficit.
We still have deficit.
Yeah, because that's gonna be going on, that income, I think if we spend it on that, it'll be all.
That's eggs, not the basket.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, it still all comes back to...
So, as it stands right now, Brian doesn't get his vehicles, not, uh, not Wheely, but Thomas.
Yeah. Well, and, and actually, um, on state contract, um, those won't be out probably until December. And so, um, you know, it's not like if we fund them, uh, and go out and get them today, uh, we're gonna have to wait until, you know, state contracts are out.
Yeah, so it'd be better to a budget amendment anyway.
Yeah. So, um, and I was only recommending one, and that was to be financed over three years, so, you know? So, I wasn't fully loading the thirty thousand into this budget.
It was like eight thousand dollars.
Eight one hundred, yeah.
Can one else got any opinion on that? Direction would be CFO.
Motion to adjourn.
I, I mean, guys, I don't, I really don't wanna come back Monday night and, and sit here and we've got motion to adopt the budget, and we've got some that are, you know, are not there. You know, I mean, we cannot take a vote tonight. If you can't vote for that proposal, as Bill has said-
Oh, no, you actually can take some votes, you can approve the budget. But, but if you wanted to take a vote on approving a three percent, you know, increase, uh, you know, across the board on the rates, and that passes, well, we'd know where we are.
What we do is we can both vote on the direction to give ourselves.
What to put on the agenda. Because that's the-
So, can we take a vote on the three percent increase?
Across the board increase?
You can. And just see what happens? If we don't vote, we have to keep talking. Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve the three percent increase across the board as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, Dick, roll call please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Moxley.
No.
Eversole.
No.
Marshall.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Gilbert. No. Calder.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Is that five?
Yep.
So, we can't pass an emergency, so it would be, I mean, if we do this, it'd be effective sometime in, uh, the middle of July if, if the votes stay the same. Uh, let's do a vote on the administrative fee, somebody at four percent, at four dollars, someone wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. I'll make the motion, describe your motion again.
I'll make the motion that, uh, we accept the four-dollar administration fee on the budget.
Okay, let me get this straight, we just passed the three percent across the board. If his motion carries, it would be the four dollars on top of-
That's right.
Yeah.
Roll call please.
No.
Stroller.
No.
Moral.
Yes.
Uh, to Moxley.
No.
Eversole.
No.
Marshall.
No.
Franklin.
No.
Gilbert.
No.
Calder.
No.
Johnson.
No.
I would like to-
That's probably about a two dollar.
Just a minute, I'm really, I'm about, about to get there. I, I wanna motion for a two dollar increase if, if you're inclined.
Let's do the, let's do the drainage ditch first.
I've already, already asked.
He already made a motion.
No, you said I want a motion. Are you making a motion or are you asking for a motion?
Uh, I'm asking the council to, to give me a vote on a two dollar increase to administration. But this is a vote that'll be on the three percent. That's right.
Yeah, the three percent's already done, so.
So, I need a motion and a second.
Okay, I just made a motion.
Oh, you did.
You can make that now, though.
Yeah, I, I, I just made a motion, but let's go on the, the three, three dollar drainage fee.
Well, you said let's go there.
Okay, I'll make the motion to put a three dollars drainage fee on the utility bill, Gordon.
Second, we got a second, motion is second. Roll call please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Moxley.
No.
Eversole.
No.
Marshall.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Gilbert.
No.
Calder.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, so that's going to pass if the vote stays the same. Well, we know what the agenda will look like, and you know what the deficit will be.
Do, do you want dinner taking the two dollar admin fee?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Stroller.
No.
Moral.
Yes.
Moxley.
No.
Eversole.
No.
Marshall.
No.
Franklin.
No.
Gilbert.
No.
Calder.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Well, we know what the agenda looks like.
There we go.
Is this helping?
That helps.
Is this helping you?
This helps, yeah.
Anybody who happens, what's it right early, won't mind.
Well, we did five years.
That's on the, on the utility rate.
Oh, okay.
But whatever.
Well, yeah, I still have a question about the three and a half percent raise myself.
Well, it would be in the budget under what you said, if you wanted to, we are going to go into executive session on Monday night to talk about the unions.
Right. Have we done, right now, if we do a three and a half percent, it's a hundred and five thousand, that's with the two unions and everybody else.
Yes.
Have we done, have we done the numbers to figure out what it would be if we didn't do the three and a half percent for everybody else and just the unions? Try to figure out how much money we could save if we just said we won't do.
I, I'll be honest with you, if unions are dictating this, I disagree with that.
I do too.
I, I don't like that.
I don't like it at all.
If they're wanting, if they want that, then they need to give something up.
That's right.
I agree.
I agree.
That's where I'm at. If they think that they have to have that, it's time to put our foot down to the unions, say enough's enough.
So we couldn't say no to any, any increases, freeze.
Yeah.
Because the person out on the yard, they're out there in the heat, heat themselves, they deserve it. You know, as well, if we're going to do it for one, I'm, I, I, I cannot sit here myself and say we don't do it for.
No, I can't disagree with you, Tim. I can't either.
I agree with you a whole lot.
So we had to figure out whether we want to do them or not.
Yes.
But we can reserve that.
We want to vote on the pay raises.
You can reserve that issue, I mean, you have a budget now, if the votes go, and, and then we'll just reserve that.
The, the number is about fifty thousand dollars related to, it's right at half of, of it is related to uniformed officers.
I'm going to make the motion that we cut the pay raises.
Roll call please.
Stroller.
Okay, let's, before we do this, let's make sure what we're voting on here, okay? Yes means we're cutting the pay raises.
That's right.
Okay.
That's for a budget, right?
Yes.
No, that went by vote, I was agreeing there, okay. No.
Morale.
No.
Moxley.
No.
Eversole.
No.
Marshall.
No.
Franklin.
No.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Calder.
No.
Johnson.
I just had to get it out there.
Yeah, it had to be on.
Well, my deal, I don't, the percentage of, yes. I don't think, what I disagree with is the union shouldn't dictate the percentage.
Yeah, that's right.
That's where my, that's where I'm at. Do I think somebody?
And they're not.
If people are performing stuff, or performing, they deserve more money.
This, this is a city that Mary's leadership proposed a, to all employees, a three and a half percent raise. Was not dictated by any, any or other unions.
Yeah, actually, the police have asked for eleven percent plus the assignment pay. I mean, you know, that's where that is.
And I would say the fire typically are agreeable with whatever the other employees receive. They've not asked for a pay increase, they typically are, accept, you know, what the council approves for other employees.
So would the council be willing to go with less than three and a half percent?
I think it should do less.
Well, you're giving, you're showing your hand and it's hard to negotiate, you know.
Let's discuss that Monday night in executive session.
But it's kind of hard to take a vote Monday night on the budget and then you tell us where the contract's at.
Well, no, but you can have, you can, you can budget the budget and you can direct us to continue to negotiate. I mean, just because you approve the budget doesn't mean anybody gets a pay rating, a pay increase. And the police don't get, and the fire don't get a pay increase until such times you approve their contract and they agree to it. So, you know, police and fire will not get one. And you can direct, Mary, you know, we're holding off on, on cost of living raises until we discuss it at another time, which can be July or August or September, or whenever you choose to. You just create, you just create the budget and, you know. So we don't have to be in a rush there if we have a budget.
All we're doing is we're saying the money's there.
The money's there.
Doesn't mean it's executed.
Doesn't have to be appropriate.
Right.
Doesn't have to be appropriate.
We can, we can budget a hundred and five thousand dollars and use fifty. We can, yes, we can budget a hundred and five and use fifty. You can budget a hundred and five. We can budget a hundred and five thousand. But then we use fifty thousand dollars or whatever.
That's why I didn't know.
It could be a one, a one hundred.
We just want to have so much.
We, we ought to have three-hour meetings all the time. I mean, just think how well this would go.
Somebody said something.
We said you were all ago.
You can, you can, we can, we can vote for a, we can discuss pay increases, you can split those up over the year. Do what we want. We got to decide.
So we don't have to for this, we can adopt this budget the way we just voted around the table.
That's right.
And move on.
We provide the budget, she administers it.
I don't think I've ever seen a voting where so many motions were made where you vote against your own. That was weird.
You just got to get it out.
Yeah, you got, you got to get it out there.
To see who everybody's saying.
That's all I'm trying to do.
Just so everybody is, is, is on plan, pretty much what you had handed out tonight, well, what you had handed out tonight is going to be the budget that's going to be presented on Monday night for adoption.
So you're telling them I'll get another copy?
I will give you another copy, yes, I will.
Excuse me just a minute, but what was the budget that you just voted on? None of the things that were suggested passed? They're not wanting to raise anything, is that what it is?
No, what, what this budget will include is it will include a three percent utility rate increase. It will include a three-dollar per meter drainage fee. It will include pay raises in the amount of a hundred and five thousand dollars.
But not pay raises, it'll include those dollars.
That does not mean just dollars available. For a hundred and five thousand dollars, not, not allocated as percentages or. It is, it is only funds in the budget that will later be determined how those are spent.
Yeah, that's, that's a very important part of that.
Well, the other important part too is water, sewer and trash, not just electricity.
And to be very clear, I think it's been approved. I think it's been approved at this point, this is just what's going to be in the budget to be approved.
No, it has been approved, utilities, we just voted on it.
No, it hasn't been approved.
Well, you actually have to approve, you have to approve the ordinance. What you've done is you've teed up what's going to be on the agenda, yeah, and that's all we've done.
You have a question?
Do I get a drainage free on my deal?
Where do you get it?
Skyline Hills. I don't have drainage.
No.
You don't get a drainage free.
I don't, okay. But I don't have sewer.
I'd like to say something, I think that this.
Well, no, we do, you know, we would, I guess, maybe.
It's just a meeting in lightening to me. And I was not for a lot of increase because I know how some people feel about it. But what the mayor said in our meeting the other night made sense to me. And I came in here ready to pay that if it was up to ten dollars a month. Ten dollars a month per person is what, thirty a day? And everybody can do without a coke or something like that. But one thing that I've always been proud about with Perry is that it's a progressive town for a town its size. And I tell everyone that about our town. And I don't want us to see us go back scratching over a dollar or two here and there. And I know that a lot of people say they don't come because the council doesn't listen to them. But I just want to say, I appreciate y'all and I appreciate the thought this went in tonight. I appreciate all the things that you've said. The only thing I would say, examine your heart when you vote and say, is it because of me? Is it because of what I want or is it because what's going to benefit the people of this city?
Are we done, folks?
You guys have a clear answer.
You guys feel like you have a clear answer?
I'd like to.
Happy anniversary, Dexie.
Now Mike is going to come to the city without me.
We got a motion in a second.
Yes.
Morale. Moxley. Eversole. Franklin. Yeah, we're knocking down the door.
Before I vote, I just want to say thank you to each one of you for the hard work you've been putting in and consideration and listening to everybody, I thank you very much. Yeah, Brian?